Okay, well, I will begin the meeting. So we're here for the committee of the whole meeting November 30th, 2021. I'll call the meeting to order at 9:31. Counselors, you have the agenda in front of you. Is there any additions to the agenda? Mayor Island.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Wilson. Not an addition, but a request for a change. And that change being that we reverse agenda items 7.1 and 7.2. I think that's fair for the prime consultant who I understand is in attendance. We shouldn't require that person to sit through our capital budget discussions. And secondly, I think the discussion about the prime consultant will better inform council as we enter into the capital budget discussion. So I would move that we amend the agenda just by reversing those two items 7.1 and 7.2.
Okay, great. That makes a lot of sense. Okay, well, with the, any further additions to the agenda? Make it a motion to approve the agenda as amended. Council Melnick, thank you. All in favor? It's all in favor, none opposed. Motion is carried. Moving on to item three. Well, no, we're sorry. We've done item three, approval of the agenda. Item four, approval of the minutes. So we have two sets of minutes in front of us on this agenda. First one being the committee of the whole from November 9th, 2021. Are there any? Any comments, additions, deletions to the, to the, or may have a motion to approve the minutes for November 9th, 2021? Council Kamota, all in favor? Ralph is in favor. That's everyone's in favor. Motion is carried. Thank you. I'll get another motion if possible for, to approve the budget presentation minutes for November 22nd. Seems to me there was two, but I'm sure they're the encapsulated in one set of minutes. We did it two nights. Let me just double check here. Mayor Ireland?
Thank you Deputy Mayor Wilson. Yes. It was over two nights, but it was one meeting. You'll remember we had a 20 hour recess in the middle of it. And I would, I would make a motion to approve the minutes subject to one very slight addition which addresses your question. The call to order perhaps could be identified as having been called to order at 6 o'clock or 6 p.m. on November 22nd. So it's clear that it was a meeting that started one day. And the adjournment recognizes that it adjourned the following day.
Thank you for that. Well, Council Melnick, you have your hand raised? Okay, you got a cartoon hand in the corner of your screen. But thank you, Mayor Ireland, for the amended, the amendment to the minutes. I'll call the question. All in favor? Counselor Hall, his screen is off. She's in favor. Everyone's in favor. The motion is carried. Thank you. Moving on to item five, we have a presentation today, 5.1, the Yellowhead Regional Library is here. I noticed we have Hank Smith and Carla Pelchuk. Bill, are you gonna, sorry, Mr. Given, would you give them a quick introduction?
Sure. Thanks very much Deputy Mayor Wilson. A very, very brief introduction. The Yellowhead Regional Library Service is an organization that the municipality of Jasper is a member of, has been for a long period of time. This is their first opportunity to introduce the organization to new council, though for many of you it will be familiar. But also to give a bit of an update on the activities of the YRL. And yeah, just to orient council to the organization and its importance for service in our community.
Well, good morning, everyone. As the presentation pops up, I'd like to thank you for appointing Wendy Hall to our board. And also I would like to welcome, I believe, the library board as well as Joyce Milnuck. As the chair should be in attendance as well, and we're looking forward to doing this presentation. First of all, I'd like to introduce myself. My name is Hank Smith. I'm the Chair of the Yellowhead Library System. And also the Board Chair of Hinton, Tonnahy Hinton Library. With me today is Carla Pelcheck, our Director. We were last here, we noted that YRL was going through an organization review. This has been completed and the recommendations have been completed. This review resulted in streamlining our processes and practices, reallocating some of our staff, reduction of lower valued activities, and a new brand representing our values and commitment to our members. If you could proceed to the next slide, please. Okay, the agenda, as you can see, this is just a little bit of background. This presentation should take a little bit less than 20 minutes or so. And yeah, we have a short presentation for you and we're happy to answer any of the questions you have. Here is a brief summary of what we're covering today and as this is a copy in your presentation package. Okay, the next slide. Okay, again, these are some of the key points we'd like to make about our libraries today. Service overall, overall Alberta, sorry about that, in municipalities, what is the municipality's responsibility? Okay, but the Guiding Act and Regulation sits with the Libraries Act and not the MGA, which is the Municipal Governments Act. So we have a separate act dealing with libraries and library services within Alberta. And the next slide, please. Okay, the role of council is to pass bylaws and create the municipal library board to appoint the library board and dismiss, if necessary, to provide funding for the library board, accept or disallow the auditor, except disallow the library bylaws. And this goes on and agrees to the services that yellowed libraries and appoints a representative to them. These are the responsibilities of council. Council determines what support determines that supporting literacy is important, so forms a library board and appoints the members. Members, council provides the funding by approving the budget. Council cannot tell the library board how to expend the funds. The board is an independent organization within. Council agrees to become a member of Yellowhead and this becomes an arrangement between YRL and the council. Next slide, please.
So this is where I get to, I get to start speaking. Yellowhead and the other regional library systems were formed under the Libraries Act and Regulation to support the provision of literacy and library services in areas outside of Edmonton and Calgary. So for Yellowhead, that was done 50 years ago. For our oldest region, which happens to be Parkland, which is south of us, that was done 61 years ago. And so what we, what we often say is this is an inter-municipal, inter-council agreement between our members and three school divisions that has lasted for 50 years. So that's a very long time for the kind of cooperation and collaboration that we're asking for across, across our area. What we do is provide equity of service so that the libraries in Alder Flats and Jasper and Spruce Grove, their residents have the same access to resources that you could expect to find in Edmonton and Calgary. And this is a partnership agreement. We would not exist but for the agreements that were struck by councils going back to 1969, 1970, when, when the conversations first started. And we would not exist but for you. And so thank you for your cooperation and your invitation today to talk to you about what we do. Our governance, we do have an executive that oversees activities in between board meetings and our executive is elected by our members. So what they do and how they do it is defined by the Alberta's Libraries Act and by our master membership agreement of which Jasper is a signatory. So our executive committee recommends the proposed budget to the full board because it is the board that has to approve the budget. They also approve our strategic plan, our plans, our plan of service by another term. They also have to approve the bylaws and the policies. So our board is pretty active and they are fully a governance board and our executive ends up meeting four times. They meet four times a year by legislation and our executive meets about six times a year. So we have a lot of meetings and they're all through Zoom right now, which makes travel a lot easier. So the board has the final, final say and the final power. Ideally, your board rep should be informing council what the plans are and what the reports are and what the activities are in between meetings such like, such as this. Sorry. About yellow, oh, sorry Hank, this is your slide now.
Yeah, I saw my name on this one. So okay, this has to do with money and money normally has to deal with board chairs and as well as boards themselves and not, or not our executive director. So this is our master membership agreement Schedule C. And so this is what Jasper pays per person to be a come, to be a member of YRL. But also we took the, took the time to also put what we get from municipal affairs underneath P Public Services Library branch. And so you see that the total we get just over $9 per capita. Okay, we are the lowest in the province of all seven regions with our rate. We also do not charge our library boards a separate fee, which is done in many of the other regions as well. So again, again, this is this is what you, what you pay and what we get as well. So you see that the municipal affairs is also 470. So I, again, you could read the screen just as well as I can. So I'll go to the next slide if I could. Okay, expenditures are based on what the master membership agreement outlines as well as our own plan of service, which is kind of like a strap plan is what you guys probably know it as in MGA land. It is a legal agreement that outlines the service counts, services councils determine are needed at the rate at what they are paid. Enhancements to the service are determined through needs assessment. Okay, the next slide, please. That'd be you, Carla.
Thank you Hank. So there's a lot of information on the next three slides about the type of programs and services that we provide to the Jasper Municipal Library Staff and Board. Our documents are master membership agreement and our strategic plan outlines what we need to do, particularly the master membership agreement. And all of these activities support equitable service into the areas outside of Edmonton and Calgary. So what do we have? Well, we have the professional librarians on staff with the expertise to be able to support your library with governance, with policies, library management, training, operations. We provide that support to trustees as well through our conferences, through other professional development activities. We provide assistance with marketing, community consultation, plan of service development, advocacy, strategic planning. And we also provide support and pretty much the entirety of the information technology infrastructure. That includes the wireless, the internet feed and the connection into Spruce Grove for circulation of library materials. But wait, there's more because we also do your purchasing for you because we can get, get ahead of the cost. We do the economies of scale. So if Jasper was to buy one book, one copy of a very popular title like anything Danielle Steele produces, you would get maybe a 20% discount from chapters. But because of our, our economy of scale and that we're ordering so many for so many libraries across this area, we can realize at least a 40% discount, which means that your money goes further. We have specialty collections, Dem and Steen products. We just got a cricket machine. We have a knitting kit. Anything our libraries are asking for, we can, we can do. And that way they can try things out in their community without having to go through the expense of buying it themselves. We run a van run service to deliver materials between our libraries. For 2021, we moved almost 900,000 items between our libraries, which is back to 2018 and pre-pandemic numbers. We also support access to resources and content from our libraries across Canada and support access for those who do not have, who cannot use traditional print. We also can enter, enter into partnerships to reduce costs and we've done that through the regional, the regional automation consortium or track, and that is the core business application for libraries to circulate material. But we also do that through sharing our pooling our cost to share eresources. One ebook can be up to $500. And so by, by partnering with the other track regions and Parkland Regional Library System, we are able to extend what we can buy and how often we have to buy it. So, um, did I fix? Yes, I did fix the typo on that slide. So that's good.
Okay, this is my side again. One of the areas where all administrations have been focused on is how to illustrate the cost avoidance and opportunities between parts of Yellowhead and what it means for your library. This slide shows first of all, what you pay us as a membership levy and based on the population figure that's listed underneath it. Okay, the next slide, please. Okay. First of all, I believe we get a certain amount of your levy that is given to 20,000. So just about $3,500 gets sent back to you or set aside for you for purchases of books and material within your library. Okay, that's what this slide says. I believe, what does it work out to do? 75 cents per, per person. Is that correct, Carla?
Yeah, we take the four, the 446 that you give us and we take 75 cents of that, put it into a restricted account so that Jasper can purchase materials through it. And then you have to include a 40% discount on there. So you can add another 40% onto that cost.
Okay, next slide, please. Okay, this is Carlos.
So this really looks at, in some ways, the cost avoidance and the benefits being part of Yellowhead. So for technology, we pay the website hosting fees, the web development, the website development fees, any enhancement to the website, changes, banners, additional content. Costs are low because of the economies of scale. We are doing this across 44 public libraries. And so we're able to drive down those costs. We purchase all the software and licensing. So for Microsoft 365, cybersecurity licenses, password protection software, library specific licenses so that staff can check in and check out information, the interlibrary loan software. And again, because we pool our purchasing power, we're able to drive down those costs and negotiate better pricing. The supernet and hardware costs, we provide the hardware required to connect to Alberta SuperNet on the, on the library side to the customer edge device. And we support the internet account costs as well. The province will support some of the supernet costs, particularly the connection to Axiom and the, the pipe that you get. And this is a cost that would not be expended but for your membership in Yellowhead. So if you were not a member of Yellowhead, you would not be getting the supernet or the high speed internet into your library. The, the, where am I? Here we go. And the other items there for the resource, the resource center, these are items that were brought in to Jasper to support the print needs of your library and the print needs of your community over and above what your collection was able to support. So Jasper brought in almost 10,000 items, just over 9,000 items for a total purchase value of $106,000. So if you were not part of Yellowhead and you had this demand on your collection, you would have to find in order to satisfy the need, another $106,000 in order to purchase those items. Same thing with digital. Because of the cost of the digital items borrowed, Jasper residents took advantage of what we had to offer for 6,000, almost 7,000 items. And because of the cost of the eresources, but including our discount, that is $314,000 worth of content that came into your library. So that means that there is a total cost avoidance or, or technology and resource sharing savings of $434,000.
Okay, so as you can tell with the math here, we, we kind of used that 437,000 and changed nearly 438. And we did a return on investment for us for every dollar that you guys spend on us. This is what it entails and, and features if you did it yourself. So again, our levy is 447, something like that, I believe. I know that's a previous slide, but again, it's, it's, it's and what you're getting is more along the lines of around 21, just over $21. And then again, this is, is the, is the reason why we have the sharing agreement between our 44, I think it's 54 municipalities as well at YRL. And so the economies of scale really help us here. And so the book buying in the Duke helps you guys get a better price also in Jasper because it's done in nearly at the same time. And the Duke's population is quite a bit more than what Jasper's is. And so that's how this all works. And so, um, yeah, this is, we feel is a really good investment for Jasper to maintain and stay within YRL. And so, and this shows us monetary value to that ends. Next slide, please. Okay, the year ahead. So again, we have a plan of service that we got a year extension on, I believe. We have a busy year ahead. We have finished our three year current plan of service. Instead of trying to build another during the pandemic, the board developed a one-year plan. That's just for 2022. We're in the process of a focus group and a needs assessment for our 2023 to 2025 plan. We're expected that the results of the focus group next week and the board should see a draft of priorities in April of 2022 for this. One of the things we've changed in developing our new plan is to ensure we understand the needs of our members. So administration analyzed each of our members' plans of service and are using their priorities to also be our priorities. Recognizing, of course, that we have shifted over the last 18 months. The board has indicated that one priority area is to look at our current levy rate. We, we cannot keep up our, with inflationary costs as moving forward. Administration continues to look ways at reducing costs without reducing services. I do have to state that in the previous 12 years to 2019, 2020, we did not raise our rate. It was always at $4.30 per capita. And so with, without doing this, you know, if you don't raise your rates and inflationary figures are, you end up losing money because of this. This has been changed with, with also in last few years. And so we would like to at least warn you that rates will be going up and moving forward. And this is going to be a great discussion for, for board, for our YRL board together. Okay, moving forward. And thank you very much for giving us the time here today to, to present. If there's any questions, please ask away.
Well, thank you, Mr. Smith and Mrs. Pelchuk. Really appreciate the presentation. The, the number that stuck with me was $1 equals $21. That's pretty impressive. And, but yeah, thank for all you do. I'll open it up to counselors, questions, comments. Counselor Melnick?
Deputy Mayor Wilson, I was looking at the, the small amount that we do pay, the $20,000. My question through you to Mr. Given, is that contained in the council budget? Or is that part of the library presentation that we had and they're collecting this on our behalf? Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Wilson, if I may, so this is, I can identify that for council. I just have to find it in the operating budget. But it is separate and distinct from funding that is given to the Jasper Municipal Library. They, they go independently to each organization. It's not funneled through the local library to the Yellowhead Regional System. So it is, goes direct to them and I can identify for council where that is in the operating budget. I can circulate that information.
Thank you, counselors. Mayor Island, please.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Wilson and thank you both for the presentation. I have two questions, slides late in the deck. And I think Mr. Smith, you, you spoke to the financial ones. So the one that deals with direct financial return, the roughly $3,500 that gets put into an account for purchases by, by the Jasper Library Board. On that slide, there are a couple of other items indicated with no amounts. And I'm just curious whether ID12 contributes at all to the, the global fund. But I take it that counties typically would contribute and I wonder whether there's any contribution from the area outside of Jasper. There wouldn't be a large population, but does ID12 on behalf of the provincial government make any contribution?
I'm actually, we put that in there. I'm pretty sure Carla did this because in areas like around Hinton, which 8% of Yellowheads, Yellowhead County region live within Brule as well as Cataman, which is within our service area. We do get a certain amount. It's usually, it's not with a book allotment, but it is with, within our budget means. But again, Carla would be the best one to answer this one. So I'm going to pass that off to her. Okay?
ID12 is not a member of Yellowhead. So they don't accept services for us for the provision of library services. And I don't believe they have a library board either. If they were part of Yellowhead, then they would or could allocate through us operating money that we would then pass on to the library board according to their division. So they might have a separate agreement with the library board and council that we are not involved in. If we were, then it would show up on the, on this chart and in our reporting to you.
All right. Thank you. I appreciate that. And the other question I have, if I may, Deputy Mayor Wilson, is, is more an operational question. You mentioned that because of the regional library system, the library here has access to the supernet. And I'm wondering whether you're in a position to help expand that to other users in the building. It's there already. I wonder whether the ACFA has access to that. I know Rotary has a room in the basement that they've contributed to. And I'm wondering whether there's an opportunity to expand what is already made available to other users in that facility.
Ms. Pelchuk?
In theory, it could be certainly the internet connection part of it, but that would require a conversation with Bell, Axia, and maybe Alberta Municipal Affairs. Yellowhead could facilitate some of those conversations once the connection is coming into your building. Absolutely. And there is situations where there has been the connection shared mostly by councils and municipal offices and public libraries or public libraries and schools. It's a matter also of who's going to look after the technology to separate the traffic so that everything has remained secure. And then we can layer on the cybersecurity issues on top of that. So it's not a quick fix, but it is a conversation that could happen.
All right. Well, thank you very much. We can perhaps see whether we can continue that conversation. But nice to know that, that you would be at least an ally in that once we, we deal with the additional costing requirements of, of splitting the connection. So I really do appreciate that response.
The digital divide is something that public libraries papered over for the last 20 years because public libraries have been there to support connectivity, free access to the internet and to the eresources. But when public libraries had to shut down as per health orders, the digital divide hadn't gone away. It was just papered over with pretty wallpaper. And so now what municipalities are doing and how the libraries can be involved to support that, to make sure that connectivity is, is, is there for the residents, I think is going to be one of the things that will surface in our plan of service for the next three years.
Thank you for that.
Great. Thank you. Counselors, anything further? I really appreciate you being here virtually. And thank you for the presentation. I'm sure Counselor Hall looks for, working with you on, on the board and thank you again.
Thank you for the opportunity. We really appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so we're moving forward. Okay, so we're moving forward now to item. What was I didn't seven point two? Um, we're doing that first. That's Activity Center Renovation Prime Consultant, R F P. I'm going to hand that over to Mr. Given to intro for us and uh, go from there.
Absolutely. Thanks very much, Deputy Mayor Wilson, counsel. Um, this morning we have a guest joining us and I think they're still in the attendees side of our meeting, or they were at least. Um, but we have, uh, oh, there she is, Michelle Morissette, uh, from W S P. Uh, Michelle is a part of the project management arm of W S P that we brought on. Uh, specifically to assist the municipality in coordinating the overall renovation. And I just want to make a distinction between the function that Michelle serves and the prime consultant. Uh, that we're going to be talking about today. Michelle is here to assist us both internally. Uh, in coordinating uh, our response and and engagement uh, in the renovation project and planning for the project. Um, she's also there to assist us in coordinating with external parties. Um, and so that includes the assistance in developing and scoring requests for proposals. Uh, coordinating site visits and a number of different other things. So Michelle is here. Um, has been with the municipality uh, on this project since council approved the award of project management services to W S P Projects, Inc. Um, and she has been an integral part of assisting us in uh, the progress that we've made to date so far on the project. And the development of the prime consultant, R F P, uh, which you're seeing the results of today. So, uh, Michelle will assist in the presentation uh, in in a few minutes here, giving a little bit of highlights of. The progress that's been made uh, to date and what the role of the prime consultant is. Uh, but we'll get to that in in just a couple of minutes. So the recommendation that administration has for you is the committee recommend council award the request for proposals for the Activity Center Renovation Prime Consultant. To G E C Architecture in the amount of five hundred twenty one thousand dollars, five hundred. For sorry, five hundred and twenty one thousand, five hundred and thirty one dollars. Um, and I'll just say first that this is money that was approved in the twenty twenty one budget. Um, and is exclusively for design. There's no construction costs in this recommendation. So council, I think, is obviously, and the community are obviously broadly familiar with the. Uh, the Activity Center, the Jasper Arena and the Jasper Fitness Aquatic Center. Uh, collectively, we are calling those the Activity Center Renovation Project, all those falling under the Activity Center Renovation Project, although they are somewhat independent facilities. Um, we said there's a need for a coordinated project in late twenty seventeen. Uh, sorry, in late twenty eighteen, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen. Um, administration conceived of a renovation project for the facilities to renew aging infrastructure. And at that time, applied for uh, federal funding under the Infrastructure Canada Program. Uh, funding for that was received, that grant uh, application was approved in twenty nineteen. And since that time, the municipality has had essentially money in our bank account from the federal and provincial governments to do a renovation project. The prime consultant uh, provides a very important function in advancing the project. It really is related to what we would think of at a very uh, high level as the design. You know, uh, that have both the schematic design of, you know, what's it going to look like? As well as the detailed, the technical design elements uh, that the sub consultants will provide, and I'll speak to that in a second. In terms of process, um, assisted by Michelle and W S P Projects. Uh, administration developed a request for proposals for prime consultant services. Uh, and that was posted uh, to Alberta Purchase Connection back in early October, on October ninth. And we had a closing date of October twenty first, so a few weeks of posting. Uh, and after that, uh, number of weeks of hosting public availability, the municipality received that five valid submissions from uh, firms. And those submissions were evaluated by a team consisting of myself, the Director of Operations and the Building and Assets Manager. We scored each of the five submissions uh, based on the evaluation categories that you can see contained in the report. Uh, that included summary and background, relevant project experience, the project team that they're proposing to apply. Uh, to our to our renovation, uh, the their proposed approach, their proposed schedule. Um, and some smaller factors for environmental considerations, health and safety considerations. Um, exclusions, and we can talk if needed a little bit about that, but a minor area there. And then and then finally fee. Um, so the ma- major areas that we were interested in were the. Do they have they done projects similar to this before? Uh, they could achieve up to twenty points for relevant project experience. Do they have a team that is qualified to do this kind of work? They could receive twenty points for that. And then how does their price compare? And they could receive up to twenty five points uh, for that category. So those are the major categories. Uh, and the total scoring available was a hundred points. Uh, administration, as I said, evaluated all five. Uh, to shortlist the top three, and you can see the top three proponents' final scores. Um, in the report. Uh, after identifying the top three, administration conducted hour long interviews uh, with each proponent. Uh, just to ensure that there was the right fit and to, you know, ask some deeper questions about their proposed approach. And some of the considerations that we're seeing around cost containment. Um, you know, material supply and and other considerations. Um, and in the end, administration chose uh, G E C Architecture, and as you can see, they have the highest evaluated final score. So in addition to the prime consultant, which is G E C Architecture. Um, this project uh, cost also contains a number of other sub. Uh, sub consultants from various technical disciplines that really together with the prime consultant form what we're calling the the design team. So it's not just an architect, because the architect also needs the support of technical experts. Like mechanical engineers, electrical engineers, structural engineers, civil engineering for uh, outside of the building. Uh, landscape architecture and uh, obviously because of the Fitness Aquatic Center and aquatic specialist. So all of those uh, sub consultants are a part of the prime consultant. Uh, proposal that you see in front of you here. So collectively, this team of the architect and all of those sub consultants will be responsible for. Preparing detailed design documents, construction drawings, uh, the technical specifications that will be required for the construction project. They'll also conduct all required stakeholder consultation and make presentations to councils required. And ultimately, they would uh, be in a position to develop tender ready documents that the municipality could use. To go to the market for construction, even when that was approved by council. Uh, I know that there are questions around cost control measures and certainly since we're discussing capital budget, the council, this will be on mind for council. Leading into this process, uh, at the advice of Ms. Morissette. Administration has included consideration of a independent cost consultant. So that we can confirm and validate the predicted costs that we're receiving through the design process. Um, and should the project move forward to construction, administration would propose engaging. Uh, an independent construction management firm uh, that would be separate uh, from the prime consultant, the designers. In the report, council can see the schedule uh, that is proposed. Um, and really with a detailed look at the front end. Um, you can see that there are highlighted boxes that show engagements with council. This first one. Um, being the committee, the whole. Committee, the whole prime consultant, R F E. It shows up uh, boat midway uh, down uh, at the very left hand side. So this is the first council engagement, but really only one of many. And I would like to highlight for council that approval of design does not necessarily mean approval of construction. Uh, we really would uh, arrive at a go no go point for construction after schematic design. And so in that chart, you can see that there is uh. Uh, schematic design phase one and an interaction with council there uh, before the completion of schematic design phase two. And that's where we would be bringing forward the recommended design. Um, and where council would face the uh, go no go decision for construction in twenty twenty two. Um, so there is uh, council earlier had asked about some of the checkpoints. Um, and how this connects to the capital budget. If council. Uh, did not approve any capital budget for twenty twenty two. Um, then obviously, uh, we could do the design and it could be sitting waiting uh, for, you know, for future tendering. Um, if council did approve money in twenty twenty two, there still would be that checkpoint where we would come back, confirm the costs and confirm that. The project was able to fit within the envelope of money, that whatever envelope of money council chooses to provide in the capital budget. And then council would have that decision of whether they wish to go forward. But all of that, uh, so if we kind of imagine that sort of being towards the end of the design process. We need to start the design process by having the right technical experts in place. And that's what this recommendation uh, for award to G E C Architecture is. This is to assemble the team that will do the uh, overall design, including the very detailed technical design. Um, using the sub consultants that will provide council and administration. The appropriate information to make decisions about whether we go forward with construction renovation for the project this year. Um, Michelle is here. She can speak maybe. Uh, I also wanted to give council, use this opportunity to give council a bit of a sense of the work that has happened. Since we brought W S P on as project manager. Um, the prod, the overall project, as I said, it has a long history, being originally conceived in twenty seventeen, eighteen, with the grant received in twenty nineteen. And here we are going in twenty twenty two. Um, but in the last four months, uh, we've made some very significant headway. And Michelle, maybe you just want to speak to some of the. Uh, things that have happened, including the aquatics assessment. And some of the other uh, data and information gathering that's happened, really just to get an assessment of the situation so far.
Sure. So one of the first key things that we've been through is that we did a project submission to Parks Canada Jasper. To talk about what our plans were in regards to the work that we're proposing within the Activity Center and the Aquatics Rex Rex Building. So that uh, submission went pretty smoothly. We got a letter of support within twenty four hours of the submission. Without additional requirements outside of what we have already done. So we didn't have to go to another level of. Of investigation. So that was, that was great. That was a great milestone for the project. We then prepared uh, an R F P again for um, consulting services to help us do a full building condition assessment in regards to the. Aquatic Center. To date, um, the municipality had done partial assessments. And we felt it would be better to have a holistic review of the entire building into one single report so that we knew. Um, what our goals were going to be. Within that submission, we asked the prime consultant. Uh, to include um, the the risks of what needs immediate attention. And what is something you should think about as a maintenance item further down the road. So we're still working through that. The initial. Uh, that team um, has been through the building. They've done their initial assessments and we had a preliminary meeting in regards to. Very preliminary findings on that. So. The outcome, the next step is we are going to be doing some uh, minor destructive testing. Um, that is to do some testing of some reinforcing in some of the concrete. We're going to do some uh, destructive testing at the base of a couple of structural columns and a concrete upstand. Um, the this work doesn't require a full drainage or shutdown of the pool. The work that we're doing can happen in conjunction. So we've made those arrangements with Brooke so that the uh, that activity, I believe, is happening December sixth. And so we will be, uh, once that's done, we'll see um, a better understanding of some of the existing deck conditions. Uh, some water infiltration issues. So we're going to do some geotechnical investigations on that. And then from there, we'll we'll have our priority list and and the cost impacts of each one. Uh, we also ask from this consultant to provide us what they felt was the end of life to the building, right? So to understand uh, how much investment the municipality should be putting into the building if the duration of the building is short term. And how much to put in if it's long term. Um, I think I used the term, it make sure the juice is worth the squeeze, basically. Um, so from that uh, report, we'll be also submitting to, um, once we agree to what the those priorities are and commit to those scopes. We'll be then transferring that report on to the prime consultant once it once it formally awarded. And from there, we'll be detailing some uh. Uh, updates that have to happen. Um, we'll be doing some preliminary design submissions in regards to. Um, uh, what what the priorities are. Um, we did have uh, one, we had, I had a meeting with Bill and Natasha in regards to the budget. Because the budget was set in twenty seventeen. Unfortunately, that's pre COVID dollars and uh, we did uh, an assessment of. You know, what what can the project bear? In alignment to the grant and the and the budget assigned. And so we're going to be working through the prime consultant on creating that priority list as well to say, this is what we can afford to do for this dollar value. Um, uh. We are finding in the market, uh, we're not going to go back to pre COVID uh, dollars. Because the market is actually supporting the increased costs right now. There is the potential for a slight adjustment to a savings. But not anticipated till potentially the end of twenty twenty two and into twenty twenty three. And we also, I think that's about all that we've been through. Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I think that covers it, Michelle. And and so counsel, that really is, uh, you know, all of that. Work that has has occurred and is currently occurring is to build a base uh, level of information. That we can provide to the prime consultant that's being recommended here. So that their detailed doc design can take into those into consideration those technical. Um, considerations and and all that underlying information so that we can get best advice. On what the detailed design should be and how it fits with whatever budget council approves. Uh, so ultimately, uh, the recommendation is the council uh, award this uh, R F P to G E C Architecture. Um, the intent would be for them to uh, initiate uh, the start of the schematic design phase uh, early in December. Uh, with completion in early February. Uh, and at that completion point is where uh, administration would return to council with what is in essence, the go no go decision on construction. Um, if the prime consultant R F P was not awarded. Uh, administration would not be in a position to give council uh, good advice on uh, the the scope of the project. Um, or the constructability of the project or priorities. Um, or ultimately the cost of the project, because we would not have that detailed design uh, and independent cost analysis. Uh, so with that, uh, council will turn it back over to you. Um, Michelle and I are here to answer any questions that you may have about this uh, recommended uh, award for design services.
I think for that, uh. Ms. Morissette, uh, counselors, uh, questions? Counselor Demona.
Yeah, I realize a lot of this uh, is is uh, this work um, has been uh, done. To assess uh, structural uh, issues and stuff. Uh, thank you, uh, Ms. Morissette for uh. For the information you provided being here today. Um, I just, I have some questions regarding around uh, the modernization of change rooms and and uh, particularly. Well, in both places, in in the aquatic center and uh, at the arena itself, and I'm not sure uh, to what uh, level and what scope that. You're involved in this process.
Those scopes are included as part of the work we're asking uh, G E C if awarded to provide. The building condition assessment is basically to talk about the bones. How's the, how's the skin? How's the structure? How are the lungs? How's the mechanical system? How's the electrical system? Because those are kind of fundamental requirements for a building. So that assessment will then direct uh, what. Infrastructure updates need to happen as part of the design uh, with G E C is they will be evaluating the design of the lockers in both the arena. And in the aquatic center and provide uh, updates and recommendations to provide more of um. An inclusive approach to uh, lockers. Because right now it's very gender specific and there's a lot of bouncing around that has to happen. So that will be part of the preliminary design discussions and to see. You know, what impacts can we do within the budget that we have?
Right, and and structural integrities and and composition of materials and what can be moved around and. Yep. Things do have an impact on on your work. And right, okay, thanks.
That's right.
Additionally, Counselor Demona, I would just say that um, a key point in the application for federal ISIP funding. Was to improve physical accessibility of all the facilities. Um, you know, the uh, aquatic center and arena were both built in a different time. Uh, where considerations around physical accessibility were not what they are today. And so that is a part of the design constraints or design challenge that we're presenting uh, to the um, to the prime consultant to say. You know, we need to improve physical accessibility. We need to uh, ensure that change rooms meet modern standards and expectations. Uh, we're hearing a lot from families that would like to see family change rooms and, you know, that will be one of the additional considerations. And then also on the arena side, uh, one of the things that we have talked about at an early stage and would explore with a prime consultant. Is how we might uh, create a bit of a forward look for what should happen with the arena side and dressing rooms there. And dressing rooms there, we know that there are constraints around the number of dressing rooms. And while the project scope that's funded by the grant is not, you know, we did not contemplate in the original grant. Adding more change rooms, we do have the opportunity to have that discussion with the prime consultant to say. Where would additional change rooms go or how could that fit in this facility? And that's something that we'd like to do with.
Can I just jump in there as well, just regarding that, that issue, so there was a lot of discussion about structural. You know, structural testing, structural elements to the aquatic center. Yet the funding that we are using isn't focused on that. So I guess my question would be, can we then, if there's issues with, you know, the structural integrity of the aquatic center or. Activity center, you know, as a whole, can we use that money to? Can we use the money that we got funding for to do that type of structural work and, and what I would be fearful of is. What, yeah, we have all this funding for this, you know, the stuff on the last, you know, the reinvestment to the activity center, you know, there's a list of. Items, but none of those are structural and would, so would we be able to use that or are you gonna, are we gonna be back at the table saying, well, we, we got this grant money for this, but. We need all this extra money for the structural work that needs to be done before this.
So councillor Wilson, yeah, a good, good question, and that's why I think. Administration brought forward the recommendation to previous council about doing a structural assessment of the aquatic center prior to. Really moving forward with the major renovation project. Administration has had concerns about the facility and wants to ensure that before we. Put any, you know, Michelle's, Michelle's analogy about the squeeze and the juice, you know, or good money after bad, whichever one you wanted to use. Administration does not want to be in a position where we do. Unneeded repairs and, and overlook primary concerns and so the intent of the. Structural assessment that's underway right now. Is to ensure that before the prime consultant starts on a big grand plan for what we can do. To the facilities, that we have a really basic understanding of what we need to do. And if the structural assessment identifies significant deficiencies, then we can bring those to the design teams. Attention and ultimately come back to council with any sort of accommodation that might need to be made. Change in project scope, or if we need to apply to the federal government to reprofile our grant funds. You know, that it would not be an easy process, but if there was something significant that we identified. Then we would have an opportunity to have that discussion, we'd have the detailed information at hand. The other thing that we've asked as a part of the structural assessment. Is for a very, 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 very high level estimate. Of what it would cost to replace the aquatics facility in its existing site. And what it would cost to replace the aquatics facility on an adjacent site, you know. You know, some, one of the less built up areas adjacent to the, to the activity center. And so admin, because administration really wants to get a sense of if we're proposing to spend X million dollars in the fitness and aquatic center. How long will that really last and how does that compare to the cost of building? And so we, we, you know, we thought it would reasonably counsel would want to ask that question and we wanted to make sure that we had. Validated answers to be able to provide you, and that's something that we will have as a part of the structural assessment that's underway. That information would all feed into the prime consultant and their design considerations.
Yeah, answering my, answering my question, thank you for that councillor Melnick and then your Ireland.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Wilson. To you, Mr. Given and to Ms. Morissette, my questions will. Evolve around the status of the roofs of all three structures I've read. Through the various documents and there is some. Consideration around the entryway, the, the long entryway on the north side of the Activity Center. I see a lot of internal things, I, can you update me and council as to? What has been done with the roofs of the buildings over the last number of years and is that part of the overall? Project of all three buildings, I haven't seen that specifically as they say. Referenced, and I'm assuming that there has been work and I seem to recall work being done in the last two, three years. But is that also a consideration given? Some of the work is going to disrupt potentially the roof with maybe the dehumidification project for the arena, we'll be putting things up there. And I just need to make, I need to, to understand if we're comfortable with the integrity of the roof over the long term.
So Michelle may have some additional information, Michelle, I'll invite you to sort of supplement this. But one of the primary considerations is that entrances, you identified councillor Melnick. It, there's significant water infiltration happening there because of poor drainage on the roof, I think it's unsightly. And as we relocate the ice plant gives us some opportunity to reconsider that main entrance to the facility. I would say that there has not been significant work on that specific area, that main entrance. But I do know that an assessment certainly of the fitness and aquatic center roof has been a consideration. And Michelle, you may be able to speak a little bit more to what comes to mind of, of what's been happening with the, with the other portions.
Right, so there was a discussion internally with, with actually Gordon John in regards to the. The existing roof structures and what can they support, so there is, they are at their design limits, so putting additional weight on the roofs is. Not a potential consideration unless we look at what it means to do the reinforcing. So we're going to do the analysis through the design as on the ground or on the roof, see which is the best value for the project. So and as Bill Given had noted, as part of the design requirement, the. The entryway, the north entrance is on the list of what areas we're asking for them to take an improvement. I can tell you when I came to the building, it didn't really say it was your front door, so it's idea of maybe providing its identity to introduce you to. What's kind of beyond the doors, right? And not such a tunnel approach, so this is, we understand that this is an important part of the project.
Thank you for that clarification and understanding that, that there could be. Depending on, on how and where different parts of this renovation go. Could affect the overall cost envelope.
That's right.
Yeah, thank you very much for that.
All right.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Wilson, I, I have two lines of questioning if you will allow. Both away from the project itself and back to. Both the scope of work of the prime contract, the prime con consultant, I'm sorry. And secondly, about the, the selection process, so if I could begin. With the scope of work of the prime consultant. Mr. Given, I, I really do appreciate the chart that is in the request for decision. Where the potential interventions of council are, are set out in red, that's, that's great to know, so we have. Several opportunities to be engaged in this and that's important. But all of those appear to be condensed into a relatively short timeframe so that. Council's last decision, if it gets that far, will be construction approval in roughly mid February. When I look at the. Request for decision that's before us. I note. Somewhere that through the process, the prime consultant. Will conduct all required stakeholder consultation and I'm wondering what is intended by that? If council is going to make final decisions in early or mid February and we're approaching Christmas now, there is precious little time for any. Stakeholder consultation and I, I don't want the public to be misled that there is going to be some. Folsom stakeholder consultation process moving forward, so what is the scope of work of the prime consultant with respect to? Whatever stakeholder consultation is intended in the report.
Sure, your worship, and again, Michelle, you can supplement and back me up on this, but first I just want to reflect that really the proposed. Renovation is largely one of technical matters. And, and life safety and asset management improvements and less so around. The types of activities that are held in facility administration isn't proposing in the original grant application. Didn't propose substantially changing the use of the building or the way the community would interact with it. It does propose improving and addressing mechanical system deficiencies. And improving and addressing some of the aesthetic features like that front entryway. That also have a, an asset management aspect, as I mentioned, the water infiltration there. So the stakeholder consultation will be somewhat limited, you know, we're not asking. The community, what new activities do they want to see in the activity center because this isn't that type of project. You know, at a very high level, there will be some aesthetic improvements and some front facing improvements the public will see. In terms of the change rooms, we would hope that the design would give us some recommendations on. Additional improvements that could be made at some future date, I referenced change rooms for the. Arena, that type of consideration, and so from an administrative perspective. We would imagine that stakeholder consultation would be primarily through council as the primary stakeholder. As the owner of the facility and really looking at this as a, as a technical infrastructure matter. Where there are forward looking projections about potential future improvements, we would connect and I have already had some initial discussions. With community, community organizations about. The use of the arena and the prime consultant would also be able to connect with those external parties. As necessary, but again, it is a relatively limited construction project that is, that is being proposed. Despite its scale, it is not proposing to significantly change or modify. The types of activities that can happen in this facility. So your worship, it is a, it is a compressed, it is a, it is a. An aggressive design schedule. But it is aided by the fact that we've done, that we have done and are doing our homework in terms of the facility assessment. And that there is a number of other previous projects that have been undertaken recently that we're gathering the information from to feed them all in, so. In another instance, a prime consultant may come into a community and say, what do you want? And let's start from scratch, this is not that type of project. Because the municipality has the aid of previous capital projects and the facilities that give us a lot of background data. We have the structural assessment that's underway right now, and we also have the twenty twenty one. Culture and Recreation. Facilities and Operations Review that was adopted by council that really laid out. The priorities that the community had around facilities and we would provide that information to the. Prime consultant as well, so they have another input sources. Rather than having to start from scratch and that's why we believe that this design schedule, while it is aggressive, is realistic. Michelle, anything that you wanted to add in terms of stakeholder consultation and scope?
No, I think it was more to kind of validate the scopes that were included in the, the fund application. To go, sometimes it's always good to have that conversation with the people who wrote the grant to see, to hear their words versus what's written down because. Sometimes there could be an interpretation challenge, so it's always good to sit down with the groups to have that one on one discussion and that can happen in a half a day. The other note, Mr. Given had noted in regards to. The schedule, there is one scope of work in regards to the water infiltration issue that. Pride, that has to be assessed and acknowledged sooner than the remainder of the project because summertime is very limited. And that's the best time to be doing any kind of civil infrastructure upgrades at a lower cost impact.
All right, I thank you both for those responses, my, my intent is simply to confirm for the public that in this context. All required stakeholder consultation is not to be interpreted as broad public engagement on the need for the project. And it, it's easy to be misinterpreted, so I, I really do appreciate the clarification. The second item I wish to address and I thank you Deputy Mayor Wilson and I apologize if. This is too piffling or pick a yun. But reading the, the scoring components and evaluation and particularly the reference to. Trying to establish a sense of fit. I just got lost in, in the wording of a couple of sentences in the request for decision. And I just asked him perhaps Mr. Given, you're best suited to, to tell me. There is a period. After the sentence that begins after this shortlisted or after this, the shortlisted firms. And there's a period after committee in that sentence. Can I fairly interpret that that is there in error and it just runs into the next sentence because I. That next sentence I can't understand without, it, it just stands, it's not a full sentence and I was confused.
Yes, through Deputy Mayor Wilson, Mayor Ireland, that should have been a comma. So the interview was intended to establish a sense of fit with the approach the municipality wanted to take. And to confirm and validate our scoring results that we had previously developed, so we first did the scoring. And then we said, okay, well, so this all looks good on paper and through our, you know, objective, attempted objective measurement. Now let's just actually do some interviews just to make sure that there isn't something else that, that might not be a fit. And that's, yeah, and so you're hundred percent correct, that is a period that could have, could have or should have been a comma. But that's what the interview was, was to say, okay, we did these scores before. Now let's just interview the top three just to make sure that there's not something that we're missing. And that, that we can validate our scores and that this is a team that we want to work with, given the substantial nature of the, the substantial sized contract.
Thank you for that, and then in terms of that. Generalized sense of fit, I, I take it that the, the selection. Committee did the interviews and it, it would have been more of a, of a negative assessment, that is, look at the scores. But maybe rule a high score out if there wasn't fit rather than sort of positively saying, well, they scored this, but we think the fit is better, I mean. Council's been through this, as you know, recently, and it's a troublesome area. Hiring C A Os and trying to, trying to assist, assess fitness. But we did well and I, I take it that you applied the same sort of process.
Yes, your worship, it really was to, to confirm whether there was something we underappreciated. About somebody that scored lower or something that we may have, you know, given overweight to on somebody that we scored high. In the end, I don't believe that it actually changed our results. It really confirmed our assessment, but as you can see, the final scores certainly between the top two. Were within, you know, two and a half points of each other, so very, you know, very close, sorry, three points, two and a half, three points of each other. So very, very close and given that closeness and the scale, the contract administration. Really wanted to have that sort of direct touch to say, is this a team that we can work with? And is there anything that we should be aware of in advance that, you know, I will, I'll, I'll say that there, you know, through the process. We identified that there were lots of different approaches, some were more. On the ground and, and practical, where others were maybe a bit more on the aesthetic and conceptual. And recognizing that this project is really about the function of the facility and its hard mechanical systems. And that we are setting a high expectation for completion of the project. Administration, you know, assess that, said, well. Yeah, our, our, our sense there was correct. That firm appears that they might have approached this differently with a bit of a higher expectation of a grander plan. Than really what is proposed and so, no, we did score that right and this other firm and specifically G E C. Had concrete answers and a concrete plan and proposal for how they would proceed through this project. That seemed very practical to administration, all of the members of their team and we did get a chance to interview. Not just the architecture team, but also their sub consultants. Really were able to answer our questions about how will you handle? What is your approach as a firm for handling shipping delays and uncertainty, given, you know, the covid impacts? And, you know, how would you do that, and so we put that to them. And, you know, how would you do that? And so we put that to them and administration was given a really good sense of confidence by G E C architecture. And it was those that chance to ask questions face to face rather than just evaluating off a piece of paper. That we thought was important, given the scale of the contract.
Thank you for that. On the basis of all that, I I will let you know Deputy Mayor Wilson that although I appreciate that the counselors may yet have. Questions, my questions are satisfied and I am prepared when you're ready to make a motion. In the wording of the recommendation that's before us, but understanding that we are not yet. Necessarily concluded with questions of administration regarding requests for decision.
Okay, thank you for that. We'll turn back to you momentarily. But if we are picking a wording, I just wanted to, I got very excited when I read. Six million, nine hundred and fifty thousand million in grant in municipal funding tax. But, you know, as as a after a phone call to Bill, I realized that, oh, no, of course, it's a six point or six point nine million. But I wanted to ask if Mr. Given, if you could just split that up approximately. What what is grant monies and what would be municipal tax funding monies, I think. Just approximately.
Yeah, well, actually Deputy Mayor Wilson, the municipality has approximately. Six million dollars in external grant funding. The total project cost also includes, you know, this early design phase, which was an extra million dollars. So the project is reflected in the council capital budget presentation. Is will receive the majority of its funding from these external grants. And, yeah, it so administration could provide a detailed breakdown if and when council wishes to go to construction. Some early phases have been, so each phase of the project has been funded. In part through municipal funds and in part through provincial funds and in part through federal funds. Administration can provide a detailed breakdown of that for council. When we arrive at the construction decisions that you can see the full amount of external dollars that are going in. But at this time, we have received approximately seven million dollars in external grants towards the overall project.
Sure, thank you for that. I have one more question, but I'll counselors, anybody want to jump in? Okay, well, my concern. No, I'm I'm very supportive of this section of the the project. I think this is the first step of many and we have to get the information in front of us before we commit to construction and. That's great. What I what my concern is, is I don't want it to hold up other projects that we have already on the go. Some on the go or in the in the works for five years. And that's the ice plant. I know that, you know, we're dealing with the same building, the same area. But my hopes would be that the ice plant is solely on its own. We are moving that forward, not pending construction of. Of anything more. You know, it's not tied to anything else. It's moving forward on its own and this is its own entity and. Anyway, I just needed a bit of confirmation in that regard.
Thanks very much Deputy Mayor Wilson and Michelle, let you speak to the specifics of how we've identified that project to the. Prime consultant and what we're requiring of them, but administration is aware of the need to advance the ice plant relocation. There have been some. Delays, as you said, Deputy Mayor Wilson, in that for a number of different reasons. And administration is fully committed to seeing that project through in twenty twenty two. And ensuring that any other projects at the Fitness Aquatics Activity Center or Arena. Don't delay that ice plant relocation, which again is a very technical sort of under underground infrastructure requirement. That also has life safety implications. And Michelle, can you maybe speak to the level of detail that we provided and how we're making the. Prime consultant aware of that ongoing project and their need to collaborate with it?
Sure, so we did include in the R F P that that project was in progress and that we've asked the prime consultant to work alongside. With the design build team in regards to that execution of the work because we wanted to ensure that whatever impacts. The Activity Center project has doesn't impact the ice rig and the ice plant and vice versa. So the idea is. If we can find an opportunity to move some scope into that area because we need to do it as part of the Activity Center. It's it would be an easier transition. So we've asked them to work alongside the team as part of their scope of work. So. They are aware of each other's existence and that they need to come together at key points to actually have a discussion to make sure. One is not impacting the other.
And and I'll just additionally say that this is the complexity of the project. I mean, you know, we're talking about. And I certainly talked about the Activity Center renovation as one big project. But as we all know, there are three pretty independent facilities with multiple projects underway. And coordinating all of those different projects and facilities and all these different consultants that we ultimately will bring on to execute. All the different projects is exactly why we brought on Michelle. Her role here is to ensure that we have maintain a high level of coordination. She is she is working on our behalf to ensure that nothing goes bump. And that, you know, that we don't step on each other's toes between the different projects. And so that's why, you know, she actually recommended. That in the R F P that we provide that information. And so all of the firms that bid on the prime consultant work. Were all aware of their need to coordinate with the relocation of the ice plant in twenty twenty two.
Yeah, thank you for that. Yeah, all that was great. And I just, as it's on the table right now. I think my support of the construction phase of this project we're talking about now would hinge on. What what administration can bring to us and say, oh, this is where we're at now with the ice plant. You know, we're we're starting to strike. So that that the one will always be ahead in my mind to get started and completed. And if we're moving that project along, I think this other project would get my support. But if if there's delays in that, I don't think I would. Get behind the construction phase of this project, but I definitely am behind the the consultant phase that we're in at this point.
Well, Deputy Mayor Wilson, if I may, Michelle, you may have, I know that you're regularly engaged with, you know, the other side of the team that's working on that. Can you maybe just speak to what you know as the current status on the ice plant relocation?
Right, so the design build R F P is out and I believe they are in reference check. At this point and have not put together the recommendation to to the municipality of Jasper. On who to award to. So there was a preliminary. Major substrate evaluation and award and that substrate will be then assigned to the successful design builder. Who will be part of the ice plant work.
And administration would expect that recommendation to be coming forward to council very early in the new year so that project can get underway. In twenty twenty two.
Excellent, great, thank you. Counselors, anything further? Counselor Demoto?
Yeah, I just have a question regarding the the construction preparation period and the active construction period timelines. What do we have an idea right now in what areas service interruptions and accessibility? For users to be changed or where we're going to have shutdowns and how that's going to affect. Our operations.
I'll I'll say first the high level, obviously, we haven't finished the design. And so once the design is finished, then we'd be able to forecast, you know, the project construction schedule. And and what that would look like for users and impact users. But Michelle, maybe you want to speak to some of the constraints that we provided again in that. Initial request proposals, what we told the prime consultant applicants, what they would need to do in terms of maintaining access to the facility.
That's right. So as part of the prime consultant, we're asking them to ensure that the design that they bring forward doesn't shut the door, right? So this will be a functioning as business as usual facility during some of the impact. So it will be. And this would assist in us bringing alongside a construction manager who will then help. Fine tune what work happens when and then give an overall impact schedule. So and. As an example, you know, if a fire separation needs to be updated, we can do it from one side of the room, if that impact one room. And then flip over to the other room when it's done. So basically, we're not, we're not shutting down all the activities. But there will be impacts, it's a renovation, but to keep it to a minimum.
That's good. That answers my question to the level I I think that you can. And and sorry if there was repetition there, but. I just wanted to be a little bit more clear on on that end of the process. And, you know, for me, you know, it when we are doing rentals, it's it. It's necessary to to change or to to close things, but it's just about, you know, where you move the shell during that.
Yeah, thank you for that, Counselor Demoto. I as well was concerned, albeit that, you know, it's. Facilities have been closed for a large part of two years. And, you know, we're just running into a new year of, you know, hopefully clear operation and starting construction. May impede that. So I I'm still weary of starting construction in twenty twenty two, but again, that's not this stage of the. Process and appreciate it. Counselors? Anything further? Okay, well, really appreciate you coming to speak with us, Mrs. Marsette. Thank you, Mr. Given for this. So what we're are looking for, and I'll probably return, let's return back to Mayor Ireland, is a motion to. Recommend. To counsel.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Wilson. I then do move that. Committee recommend that council award the request for proposal. For the Activity Center renovation prime consultant to G E C architecture in the amount of. Five hundred and twenty one thousand, five hundred and thirty one dollars.
Thank you for that. Anything for other counselors? Counselor Demoto?
No, I'm going to support that. And and I think that I appreciate the diligence that administration took and. And the efforts and, you know, the concise information that we have in front of us and and I really appreciate the process. So. I'm looking forward to to voting on that next week or in two weeks.
We will call the question. I do see that Counselor Hall is frozen. Oh, are you not? Yeah, she's frozen to my end, but I'll call the question. All in favor? Yeah, Counselor Hall on my end is frozen. Anybody else see her with their hand up or down? It's currently down. We'll just wait a few moments here, hopefully. Well, we have five in favor and we lost Counselor Hall, so. We'll move forward with the with that. I think at this point, I'm going to call and I'll touch base with her after I call this brief recess. I think we're moving into a fairly lengthy discussion on. The capital budget. So let's call a ten minute recess. We'll return at eleven fifty five. Counselor Hall, were you in favor of that last motion? Thank you. Okay, so you may have missed it. We're going to call a ten minute recess. We'll be back at eleven oh five. Okay, it looks like everybody's back. I'll call the meeting back to order at eleven oh five. We're moving on to item seven point. What was seven point one, I think now seven point two capital budget twenty twenty two, twenty twenty two to twenty twenty six R F D. I'll hand that over to Mister Given to start us off.
Thanks very much Deputy Mayor Wilson. So council, this will be the second time that you've seen the capital budget. Administration provided the detailed capital budget to council that we can advance of the budget presentations. Which happened last week. So I think now it's been in your hands for for a couple of weeks, appreciating that, you know, there's a lot of detail there. But we do arrive at a point where council will need to enter into discussion debate and ultimately decision making with respect to the twenty twenty two capital budget. I can cover some of the highlights and I would do that only at a very, at a very high level, recognizing the council would have heard all of that presentation earlier. And and has reviewed the the capital budget specifically. But maybe I'll just speak to the. The role of the capital budget and timelines. The municipality, as you heard. Has in in the last presentation, you heard about some of the processes that the municipality undertakes when we engage either consultants. Or contractors or when we purchase equipment. That there, you know, you heard that for the prime consultant, we had a R F P posted for three weeks. But there was actually a couple of weeks of development after that, and then a couple of weeks of assessment following. Prior to being able to come to council with this recommendation today, and as you know, the committee recommendation won't go to council and be formally approved until next week. And so we issued, as an example, we issued that request for proposals on October ninth. And it will, you know, likely not be until December. Seventh, that we would hopefully receive formal council approval to move ahead with, you know, engaging that consultant. Apply that same sort of timeline to capital projects and you can see why it is important for the municipality to be considering. Our capital program for the upcoming year as early as possible. Many, particularly when it comes to physical construction. Of roads or or other capital works, we as all, as we all know, we have a limited construction season. And which is also made extra challenging by our desire to avoid peak tourist season in Jasper. That means that we have relatively small construction windows that are also impacted by some of the constraints of the national park system. So in order to plan our construction projects and fit them within the timelines that our construction season provides us. Administration really needs as much lead time as possible. If council is considering or hopes to initiate a capital project in the in the new year. Administration, you know, would have to go through the process of developing the scope of work for that project, developing a request for proposals. Issuing it, evaluating it, and then ultimately engaging after council approval, engaging the contractors to to do that work. And many contractors will be setting their their, what I would call their book of work for the season early in the new year. And so if Jasper's process of approving a capital plan. Takes us into spring, then there's a high probability that many contractors that we might like to engage have already actually started to fill up. Their available construction days in their calendar. So that's why administration is hoping to work with council. So that's why administration is hoping to work with council to achieve some decision making on the capital budget, so that we might be able to start that process at the very start of the new year. With the full intention of that early approval, allowing administration to get more progress on the twenty twenty two capital projects, which should lead to less carry forward projects into twenty twenty three. It is not desirable to administration to have projects carried over from a previous year and more projects. And it really just sort of them accumulating and piling up. If we're proposing something, we do want to see it completed. And council can assist in that completion by considering the capital budget, discussing and debating the merits of the different items, and then ultimately providing administration with direction on the capital program that you're willing to support. And that's why this is here at the very end of November and hopefully with the timelines that we discussed last week, seeking a council approval before the end of the year. So with that sort of timeline discussion, I'll note that in the report, we did pull out the highlights by service area significant capital, carry forward items, significant new projects and significant unfunded projects. And I'll just speak to the unfunded category. Unfunded projects are items which administration perceives a need or potentially a desire to complete. But those projects do not yet have any money assigned to them. And so if they are not funded, they will not go forward. So I just wanted to be clear with that. I had had a couple of questions from some council members, and it's, I think, important to get that clarity that although a project is shown there, if it doesn't have a funding source identified, the project will not go ahead. It would stay on our capital plan. And really, you hear quite a bit of discussion across Canada in municipalities about unfunded infrastructure deficits. And so I think this is a very literal demonstration that there are items that are in our capital plan that we know or believe that we need or will need, but they do not currently have funding identified. And so unless council says that they're worthy of funding in twenty twenty two, they would not go forward. The other thing that I'd identify is the really, you know, I think it's worthwhile having a little bit of a discussion about the relationship between capital and operating. The operating side of the budget is obviously where we collect the money and bring some of that money that we collect to fund capital programs and items. The system that we have right now is that there are a number of different transfers to and from reserves that you can largely see in the capital plan. Those transfers to and from reserves are a significant portion of the money that is used to fund items that are listed with a C R M R or capital repair, maintenance, replacement, funding source or the restricted reserves funding source. So we're bringing money in from the operating budget over to the capital budget to do some of those projects. And those are the types of projects that have an impact on the operating budget. A grant funded project obviously doesn't have the same impact on the operating budget and the net tax requisition because it was money from others. You know, we weren't planning on collecting that money from the local taxpayer to fund a project. The way that a grant funded project could have an impact on the net tax requisition would be if grant funding was applied to a project that was previously funded through some internal source. So, you know, if we basically say, well, we were planning on using government grants to do this one thing. We're choosing not to do that one thing. And we're going to use those government grants for some other thing that we were planning on funding with our own, you know, local tax dollars. That is about the only way that that those grants would have an impact on the operating budget. The other thing that I'll say about the impact between operating capital is around major projects and deficit financing or debt financing. You will see debt financing reflected in the capital budget for the years in which administration would intend to take on the debt that we'd go and get the mortgage. You see the full mortgage amount reflected in that year. But as you know, you don't pay up a mortgage all in the first year that you get the mortgage, you make those payments over a number of years. Those payments, the debt payments are reflected in the operating budget on an ongoing basis. And so the best example of that is the best recent example is the Canot Utilities Project. That capital project was approved by the past council. And it is an item in our capital budget. And you'll see, you can see the debt that's related to that. But as this council knows, our operating budgets in twenty twenty two are where we actually start to pay for that capital project. So and there are a number of other ones where you'll see municipal debt as a funding source. And I guess the reminder to council would be that the connection between debt in twenty twenty two and the municipal tax requisition in twenty twenty two is you don't get the same bang for your buck. You know, if you remove a million dollars of debt in twenty twenty two, it does not mean you've reduced the net tax requisition in twenty twenty two because we would have started making payments on that debt in twenty twenty three and beyond. So, you know, with those caveats, you know, I thought it was worthwhile to identify those to council and the community because the connection between operating capital is sometimes a little bit nebulous. And I don't know whether I've just made it better or worse, but hopefully a little bit better. But ultimately, I think today's discussion hopefully will be about what do we need to do? These projects that administration has identified and proposed, are they ones that are required and the council is willing to support or not? And then from there, there is the operating budget is where we get to the discussion of how do we pay for these projects? And then it isn't until the spring where we set the mill rate where we really have an opportunity to discuss who out of our local taxpayers pays for the net tax requisition. That discussion is somewhat independent from the capital budget, is very independent from the capital budget, is somewhat connected to the operating budget. But ultimately, when we set the mail rate in the spring is where we have that choice of deciding who carries the majority of the load on the, any net tax requisition that is required in the twenty twenty two year. So with that, Deputy Mayor Wilson, maybe I'll hand it back to council. I know that you have seen the report, you have seen the highlights and you have the full package. I'm sure that council members are interested in discussing and debating the merits of the projects that are proposed. Administration provided a recommendation for you that council approved the twenty twenty two, twenty twenty six capital budget as presented. But there are alternatives. And if council wished to make some amendments to the capital budget that has been presented, either additions or deletions. We've provided a format for that type of motion below, that would be essentially that committee direct administration to make an amendment to the twenty twenty two capital budget. And it would be up to the council member to describe what that amendment was. Council, we propose that council could discuss and debate proposed amendments, vote on them. And then ultimately, when council is satisfied with the capital budget, that there would be a final motion that committee recommend council approve the twenty twenty two, twenty six capital budget as amended. So that's a bit of a process orientation. And Deputy Mayor Wilson, I'll turn it back over to you to guide the council discussion about the specifics.
Thank you very much. Well, councillors, who was up first? I'm sure there's lots of discussion. Councillor Keller-Empe, first to bat.
Thank you, everybody. I'm sorry about my technical issues earlier today, and I also apologize for missing the budget meetings. I have to say, having the new technology been able to watch the budget meetings was great, very interesting. Just under seven hours watching. To you, Deputy Mayor Wilson, to Mr. Given, I have a question. On the reserves, I guess most of it, but that money is actually in reserves when it says R R. That money is already in, is allotted for, we'll just say, the rooftop unit is R R. So that money is already designated for that. Am I understanding that correctly?
So Deputy Mayor Wilson, right now, the municipality maintains a number of restricted funds that are collected for a specific purpose. They may be collected either in that specific year or be an accumulation of collections in previous years. In twenty twenty one, the transfers to reserves into into the budget totaled on the on the tax side, not on the, not on the utility side, to make that clear, on the on the tax funded side, totaled just over one point two million dollars, or sorry, I'll say just under one point three million dollars. In twenty twenty two, the plan that's in front of administration proposes just under one point four million dollars. So it's about a two hundred thousand dollar, one hundred and ninety seven thousand dollar increase there. And so there are some years where we are actually for a specific project building up amounts. There are other years where we are collecting in a year and having it go out in a year. And unfortunately, right now, our internal accounting system doesn't make a distinction between those in a way that is presentable for council and the public. We have approximately we have approximately thirty some different reserve accounts that we transfer in and out of in a given year. And it is not at a level of, the level of complexity doesn't lend itself to a simplified understanding for the public.
Thank you, Mr. Given. May I ask one more question, Deputy Mayor Wilson?
Yes, please, go ahead.
To you, to Mr. Given, I have one other question for you. So I'm going to just take this as an example. Washer and dryer by two, it's in a reserve fund, right? So we'll just say they were pretty good. Could we, could we use that reserve fund for unfunded? Could we switch it out and then rebuild that reserve back if it was needed?
Sorry, I just want to make sure that, so are you looking at the ones that are, I believe there were some in the Fitness and Aquatic Center?
Yeah, yeah, I'm just looking here like it has weight room benches are, we have washer and dryer. From that reserve front on.
I know that we're getting a bit of interference on councillor Keller-Empe's feed. But I can, on the assumption that she'll be able to hear me, I can say that transfer in.
She's back.
Sorry.
So the transfer in to reserves is just over eighty three thousand into restricted funds R R in the Culture and Rec area is eighty three thousand, three hundred and thirty three dollars. So it is just slightly more than the projects that are proposed under the R R category for the Aquatic Center.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Given.
Thank you, councillor Keller-Empe, councillor Demota.
Yeah, just for some clarity, when we're looking at C R M R, the capital repair, maintenance and replacement and the restricted reserves, essentially the same thing, right? This is money that's been that we're taking out of reserves in general to fund today's projects or sorry tomorrow's projects, meaning twenty twenty two.
Deputy Mayor Wilson, yes, and administration does not have a significant amount of money sitting in reserves from previous years. The capital system in Jasper is built on the expectation that every year there will be an amount of money transferred in from the operating side that will fund capital projects. Out of those thirty four, if you want to think about it as thirty four different accounts, some of them may have a small amount that is carried over year from year. We have, you know, sort of a gen, general a general restricted funds within the administration area. That one is usually maintained year to year and is used in a number of different areas. There are other areas that the majority of their funds are withdrawn in the same year that they're collected. So if you think about the accounts that, you know, they're, they never have any, many of our accounts never have a large accumulation. My hope would be that for future budget cycles, we'd be able to present council with a simplified version that demonstrated a, you know, a capital improvement reserve. And that we would be able to demonstrate to council and the community how much is going into that capital improvement reserve in a single year and how much is being withdrawn in that year. Right now, it is a bit of a complex picture, as I said, because there are thirty four of these different accounts with separate ins and outs that are applied to specific purposes. But at a high level, the transfer in last year was one point two eight eight million. The transfer in this year is one point three seven eight million. And I'm sure as you if you went through the list, you could total up the amounts that are proposed to be expended. And I believe that it is pretty close to that one point three million dollars that we're planning to collect this year. So there is not a a significant lark, you know, additional accumulation proposed this year.
Sorry. Okay, so just to clarify again, you know, through Deputy Mayor Wilson, to Mr. Given, we are with with the collective expenditures to the proposed expenditures to capital repair, maintenance and restricted reserves. We're looking at one point eight eight two for this year. Is that what you're saying?
One point one, well, the amount that we're collecting this year and transferring into reserves is one point three seven eight.
Right. Yeah, that's the the money that we're collecting this year. But what's proposed for the expenditures? I guess I could have gone and added them all up. Well, that it's kind of difficult, I guess, with with the chart that we have, like you're saying. Oh, yeah, no, it's here. So twenty twenty two, like if we, if we went and added up all the the C R M R and the R Rs together. You were, you had another number of one point eight million. Is that what we're spending on capital this year from reserves?
Yes, I believe that's correct. And so you can see that a significant amount of that one point eight million is money that is being collected in the current year. A very small, you know, a small amount is money that was collected in the previous years.
Okay, so there's actually a shortage from what we're planning on on using the one we're actually collecting. Overall, when it's when you're looking at the in and out.
That's correct. I mean, we are essentially drawing down on reserves. We're not in a position where we're building them up significantly.
Well, I think that answers my question initially because my thought was like, what are we bringing in? What are we expending? And what is the the cost? I was trying to figure out what the cost of this year's operations dollars are going to this year's capital. So you weighing out, we're actually in a deficit compared to to what is proposed. Okay, so that that's good. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, councillor Demota. Councillor Hall.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson, through you to Mr. Given. My question is about grants that you said we could potentially apply to other things. Is that allowed in the rules of grants or, like I know, sometimes they're a bit more specific?
Yes, Deputy Mayor Wilson for councillor Hall. Yes, grants often are for a specific purpose. There are some flexible programs, specifically the ones that provide the most flexibility are the gas tax fund and the M S I C fund. Both of those are grants that are given to municipalities with fairly broad latitude about how we apply them. Unless of course, with with some constraints. So each program will have its own specific things. The M S I C, for example, has a list of things that are eligible for it. And the spending amounts have to be over a certain amount. You know, you can't fund a whole bunch of ten dollar projects because the government doesn't want to see a whole bunch of ten dollar projects funded. They want to see, you know, a more significant, more significant shorter list. So there are some constraints. The other constraint would be if we have applied for a grant with a specific purpose. And so the ISIP grant, you know, we discussed the ISIP grant that was applied for for the renovation at the Activity Centre. That was applied for under a specific purpose. And if there was a change to that purpose, we would have to go through probably a significant process with the federal government to get approval to make that change. The most flexible source in the budget is likely the M S I C grant, which is funding that is given to the municipality on an annual basis with, you know, based on population and a number of other factors. So it's money that we receive on an annual basis. It has declined significantly over the past number of years, but it is also one of the most flexible capital grant funding sources that we have.
Mayor Island, please.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson. On my screen, councillor Hall is frozen again. So if she comes back and. Has a follow up to her question, I'm happy to defer. But. Based on on her question, I. I need some clarity, and this ties to. The utilities capital budget, and I apologize for drawing in what might appear to be extraneous things to the the capital budget overall, but. To the extent that one of the most flexible funding sources is the federal gas tax. I am. Curious to find why the federal gas tax funding appears only once in all of the capital budget and it appears in the utilities budget. For residential water meeting, water meeting meter upgrades. And so to the extent that. Utilities. Are hoped to be self funding. I'm surprised that we would use external funding from the federal gas tax. In respect to. Utilities. Now, if we took that out and and applied it to our regular capital budget. It would mean, of course. A shortfall in the utilities, but on the other hand, utilities are supposed to be. Self funding, and so there's eight hundred thousand dollars of federal gas tax funding that. I think might have a better home in the capital budget and that presents us a different problem with the utility budget, but. It can take a different approach because we have been on a constant course to try and make utilities. More of a self funding proposition. So I I would like to know if Mr. Given or through him to other staff can. Clarify why the only use of federal gas tax funds is in the utilities budget.
Deputy Mayor Wilson to Mayor Ireland. Mayor Ireland, you're you're correct. The federal gas tax fund is quite flexible. Looking at the program guidelines as published in twenty nineteen and we, you know, administration would have to confirm that these are the most, these appear to be the most recent. But they identify that eligible costs related to categories, including local roads, roads and bridges, highways, public transit. Drinking water, wastewater, stormwater, solid waste, sport, infrastructure, recreational infrastructure, community, infrastructure, sorry, community, energy systems. Cultural infrastructure, tourism. So, you know, there is a pretty long list. I think at the administrative level, we are doing our best to give council recommendations that are practical. And it means balancing, you know, the different funding sources. And a change in the application where we would choose to apply the federal gas tax fund. Would, you know, have that, as you correctly identified, that resulting impact on utility rates, we would need to collect more money on utility rates. To fund the capital program on that side if we didn't apply it. That is certainly possible. If council and so an example that I could give. If, and there is the one project, the residential water meter upgrade. If council said that is a project that should be funded by the users of the system through their user rates. If you gave us direction to. To remove federal gas tax from that project. While continuing the project and funding it through. The utility rates. We would bring back that impact on the operating side and and utility rates to you at the operating budget. And would provide council eight hundred thousand dollars of a relatively flexible funding source that could be applied in other areas in the capital.
Okay, there's a Mary Island. Happy with the response?
Yes, it's a response that I I think is absolutely appropriate. It's it's a question for for council and I look forward to that debate. I'll. I'll let it sit now. But yes, we could take that federal gas tax funding and apply it to. Capital budget exclusive of utilities and then find a way to fund. Necessary utilities. Obviously, if we want to proceed, that will take an increase, a further increase in. Utility rates, but it's a difference between whether utility users fund projects. Or whether taxpayers generally fund projects. And to me, that that is one that. I think has a better home in. The regular capital budget, which would be offset in the tax requisition that would be required. But. I leave it out there. It's it's great information to have. So I thank Mr. Given for his response.
Counselor Demoto, one second. I just want to follow up on that as well, and then we'll go to you. Does administration see? Financial benefit, you know. Immediate or, you know, yes, we're probably going to capture and read more usage of water, but eight hundred thousand dollars is a pretty. Big commitment. Are we going to see payback? Like substantial payback for for that eight hundred thousand dollar commitment or? Do we just kind of keep operating as is?
But yeah, Deputy Mayor Wilson, I know that our utilities manager, Mr. Michelle is here. He's on the attendees side of our meeting. I could ask him to be elevated to a panelist and he could maybe speak to. The perceived benefit or need of that residential water metering program. And whether or not that that's something, yeah, that what the perceived benefits are of that and why it is in the capital program. I see that Bydel is there. Join us at the council table.
Mr. Michelle.
Yeah. Good morning. Yeah, in regard to that capital ask, the benefits would be twofold is what we calculated. Is, as John mentioned on the presentations, is on average, these meters of what we know under read by six to 10%. So by having meters that run accurately. We're foreseeing an increase in revenue on that fold, but also currently we are spending between twenty and thirty thousand dollars a year. Rebuilding water meters. Because a typical water meter's accuracy is guaranteed for 10 years. And the current batch of water meters we have in place are a on average twenty four years old. So they're well past their lifespan. And are in need of replacement. Does that satisfy your question?
Yeah, just further to it. So you would see this, you know, kind of repay paying back the initial investment. Within five, 10 years, you know, just ballpark, I guess.
We anticipate the payback within the life of the meter, so a fifteen year buyback. So it pays for itself.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Demoto.
Yeah, good. Well, you know what? That's a good question. And, you know, and and something to consider, we keep our fingers crossed and see if there's future funding for replacement on those. In 10 years or going forward and and so that we don't have expiring meters at a twenty five year old lifespan. So we have to think forward and and every little. Aspect of what we contribute to, like, there's so many things that, you know, fall into that capital replacement. And user of the day that pays for it. At the risk of having rhetorical diatribe here. Deputy Mayor through you to Mr. Given. You know, you're looking at, I'm looking at the the proposed capital budget and and the breakdown of where all the funding is going and. What's unfunded? So if there if council decided to go in a direction of reducing that. And not really paying specifics to. The the line items and obviously. The the ones that are addressed at the moment that have funding attached requests attached to them are the priorities where those need to get done other than. You know, things like sand filters and and weight room benches, right? So, okay. Where I'm going is. Similarly to what the mayor was asking, and I I had a. I had a motion set up to see. If there was any way to look at those external types of funding that are out there, there might be applied to other things. Maybe not entirely like that eight hundred thousand dollars or or other MSI. They could be used to help reduce the tax funded portion of the twenty twenty two operations budget. And I know these things are intertwined and and, you know, if if I can ask. Council with their patience for me and in asking these questions, I've just, to me, like. Regardless of having the COVID relief money attached to already attached to the operations, the proposed operations budget. Overall, we're looking at a nine point nine million dollar budget. Sorry, tax requisition right now from the community, and that's a substantial jump from from last year, and it's it's getting close to 20% in my mind. So. I think that, you know, just being prudent and conscious of, you know, the environment we're still in and and the way the economy is. Slowly trickling out of the pandemic. I'm just looking for ways that we can save, but not necessarily. You know, restrain ourselves in the future. So are there, could there be some? A little bit more pragmatic approaches that administration could, you know, come back to council with. Where we could use some external funding to help reduce that burden?
Deputy Mayor Wilson, I'm not sure if that was a question for administration or a question to Counselor Demoto's council colleagues, but.
No, no, that was to you, sir, like through the deputy mayor.
Sure. So Counselor Demoto, I I'd say that, you know, if council. Had specific projects that they felt were not a priority for this year, that would be one way to approach it and to identify those projects which are not a priority. Or where council felt that they, you know, as we just had a discussion about the federal gas tax fund. You know, that they would prefer to use a external funding source like that grant. And. Substitute that grant funding for tax funding, that that's one way to handle it, you know, on a project basis. By removing it from a project, maybe directing administration to identify opportunities to substitute that funding to reduce the overall net tax requisition. Or council could say, you know, that the amount of capital funding that they're willing to support in twenty twenty two. And and then give administration that high order guidance and then administration would be responsible for coming back and giving recommendations to council. About which projects should stay and go. That might run the risk of administration, you know. Making recommendations that council doesn't agree with, and you'd still be in a position of having to discuss and debate individual light items. So, you know, that's a bit of the challenge, I think, for council. Administration can certainly work with it either direction.
Yeah, okay, thank you very much. And, okay, so like to counsel, I just, I don't want to delay the process. I'm very grateful that we're having the the capital project in front of us today, and I think it's important. I like change and and I like to see us change things up in this matter, and if it helps us with getting projects going quicker and and. You know, with with better costs. I'm all for it. I'm just, I'm very concerned about, you know, the overall tax requisition in general. So I was going to propose this. But if, you know, I'm just, I'm doing this through consensus, and I'd like to hear what other counselors have to say. So. I was going to suggest that committee direct administration to return to council. With a recommendation of where MSI grants or other funding can be best used to reduce the tax funded portion of the twenty twenty two operations budget. Now, if it's going to be an entire waste of time. To administration to go through this, and then we're going to debate things that, you know, we don't want or to add or take off. Then, you know, I don't want to go through the process because there's been a lot of work put towards this. But if we have an opportunity where, you know, we could better use some of that that money. To mitigate our process out of, you know, the pandemic pandemic and and moving towards better times, I think. That approach is would be more useful to the community as a whole.
Well, there's a couple of hands went out, but I would suggest. Administration has already done that. They've built a budget. With those. Like thoughts in mind with they they know that where do where they should be applying. Grant funding in in what location? So I I think this is. And this is just me listening to what you just said there, Counselor Demoto, but isn't that? Just suggesting that they go back to the drawing board? You know, I just, I don't think there'd be need to be more direction there given, and I'm open to hear it, but. I, yeah, anyway, that was my, just my first thoughts on that. I saw some hands go up. First was Counselor Keller Empi. And then Counselor Melnick, did you? You'll be next, okay? And then we'll return back to Mr. Given.
So I'm kind of going to go a different way. On a number of these capital items, we're going into debt. I'm correct on that. Do we know to you, Deputy Mayor Wilson, to Mr. Given? How much in percentage are we paying for the loans to cover some of the? Activities that we're doing within the capital budget?
Deputy Mayor Wilson, just for for clarification, Counselor Keller Empi, are you are you talking about the, you know, the the interest rate? That we're paying with it? Yeah, yeah, it's hovering, and so it fluctuates depending on borrowing period. Pretty dramatically. I think the most recent borrowing that we've gone out and looked at was actually in that sort of three percent range. So, you know, plus minus, but sort of if I said three percent, I'd feel comfortable that we, you know, end up, you know, point five here, point five there on either side of that, but in that range.
So my line of thinking is. Could we not get a loan to cover some of these capital items, be done with it, make it? Put it over fifteen years at three percent to the community to pay back. And keep some of the money in the reserves. And keep those in the reserves, like, wouldn't be better to offset? I'd like to know what Mr. Given to you, Deputy Mayor Wilson, thinks of that idea.
Deputy Mayor Wilson, that that certainly is possible. Administration's advice would be that there are only really certain types of projects that have a little bit longer lifespan. Certainly don't want to be borrowing for a project that you're going to need to redo in five or 10 years while you're paying for it for 20 years. But subject to that, certainly it is possible. It also might depend on the scale of the project, but. And the other reminder, I guess, that I would make is that that does have a forward impact on property tax rates. So it may reduce the impact in the current year while shifting the burden to those future years, however long the term of borrowing is. And so. But it is a strategy that that can be employed. Council will see that administration has been using that approach, at least in a limited basis. Sorry, at a sort of an overarching basis with respect to annual capital requirements, the wastewater treatment side. So, you know, there are annual capital items that are needed. The municipality takes on debt in smaller chunks, and then that debt is funded through the annual utility rates on an ongoing basis. So we certainly do apply that approach in the utility side. And is something that we could do on the. On the tax funded side, as long as the projects were something that had a relatively long lifespan.
Okay, thank you. See, I see you, Mayor Ireland, but I think Counselor Melnick. Go ahead, please.
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson. I just want to. Have a point of clarification as a new counselor and looking to understand, not only for this budget, but for future budgets. Mayor Ireland identified that the federal gas tax appears in one line. And it's eight hundred thousand dollars. I my question for clarity is. Is the federal gas tax every year in that? Ballpark dollar amount? Or is this a transfer from? One of the reserve accounts where we've accumulated the federal. Gas tax over a period of years. And now we're bringing eight hundred thousand dollars of it into this capital in one specific project. I think we need to understand, is this a relatively steady source of funding? Which will help us not only, I think, get through this year. But will help us understand where funds are available for future capital years.
Thank you, Counselor Melnick, Mr. Given.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor Wilson. I'm just calling up that information. I didn't have it directly at hand, but I do have it on screen and I'm scrolling the list. So. This. This eight hundred thousand would be an accumulation. It is not all of our. Sorry, excuse me. There was top up funding added in twenty twenty. In twenty twenty one, and we may be carrying some of that over our. Typical funding in the twenty twenty one year. Was four hundred and twelve thousand dollars. There was top of funding of. Um, there was top of funding applied in 2021, I think as a COVID, uh, you know, uh, recovery measure um that brought our total funding. Uh, sorry, excuse me. My apologies, and this is a challenge of finding information quickly. I was reading from the long, long, the wrong line. Um, the others, one of the other specialized municipalities, uh, the municipality of Jasper received typical funding of $274,000 in 2021. Top of funding of $260,000 in that same year for a total funding of $537,437. So you can see that uh the 800,000 is an accumulation of multiple years of federal gas tax funding. It is not the amount uh that we would have received all this year. Um, but we can expect that we would receive additional amounts in future years.
Thank you for that. I think that clarifies it. I hope it does for other counselors in that. Um, you know, that when we do draw on that accumulation, we then have to realize there'll be other years where that amount that we could draw maybe two, three, $400,000 less and maybe part of how we earmark funding projects to three years down the road. Thank you for clarifying, and I appreciate trying to pull up information on a relatively, like, no notice. I, I appreciate everything uh to help clarify. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselors? Counselor Demota and then Mayor.
Yeah, no, I, I appreciate, uh, you know, your comments and, um, it's not that I'm, I'm challenging administration and uh or saying that, you know, maybe they didn't do a conclusive job. I just, I was just, you know, I'm, I'm doing my due diligence to ask the questions, like, could there be other opportunities that maybe weren't considered? Or um, do we have other options? And, you know, I'm, I'm not saying that, you know, there are other options there, and if we don't ask for them, then, you know, they might not be available. But at the same time, if you don't ask the questions, you know, you might not know where we can have some uh positive impacts for the community.
Yeah, sure. Uh, Counselor, or sorry, uh, Mr. Given.
Uh, thanks, thanks very much, Deputy Mayor Wilson. Yeah, certainly on the administrative side, uh, there's no misinterpretation about Counselor Demota's intent or, or discussion there. Uh, appreciate that everybody's at the table with good intent. Um, this does uh reflect administration's best advice and making some interpretation of what council's priorities might be. Uh, so you know, again, just to reflect that, that discussion about things that could be funded through utility rates versus through, you know, uh, the tax requisition grants. Um, if council expressed to administration that they wish to see um utility capital funded exclusively through utility rates, then administration could act on that. Um, I think here is a, is a moderate approach. Uh, you know, I will say that I wouldn't have necessarily come to council and said, well, you know, utility rates need to uh increase in addition to what administration is advising. Um, and that all, you know, provincial and federal grants should only be applied in the uh, you know, the, the tax envelope funded side of the, the budget. I wouldn't have predicted that in upfront. If council gave us that direction, um, administration could happily and reasonably amend the capital plan to, to roll with that direction from council.
Mayor Ireland?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson, and, and recognizing that what is before us is administration's best advice. Um, I am still interested in that question of the application of federal gas tax um to the utilities capital budget. Um, and so I, but I could be persuaded that, that the best advice that we've already been given is in fact superior to my own thought. But um, based on a combination of things, and I, I go back to Counselor Keller Ranty's question about borrowing, and it seems to me that on the utility side, if we leave capital improvements to be funded by utilities, um, we could borrow um on the utility side and fund it over time, that those replacement um water meters have a long lifespan, as we just heard from uh Fidel. So um, it, it is an appropriate improvement on which to, to borrow the monies. That would lessen the impact over time um on the utilities budget. And then if we could transfer that federal gas tax 800,000 that we were going to spend in utilities to the other capital budget um and potentially look at some additional borrowing to offset that 1.4 million that otherwise is coming from current taxes, um, we might be able to significantly impact um the, the operational budget um down the road. So we still get the capital projects, we just treat them a little bit differently, fund borrowing against some of the utilities. Uh, perhaps fund a little bit more of the regular capital through a bit of borrowing, maybe up to about a million dollars and apply that against um the current year operational budget and, and walk away feeling um good on behalf of taxpayers, but recognizing that um ultimately these things still have to be paid for, and they'll be paid for either through a combination of direct payment from taxpayers or payments as utility users, but advertise over a number of years if we happen to borrow. So um combining those, I, I, I see an opportunity for us to, to move forward, get the capital projects done, but also reduce the burden on taxpayers for this year and extend it over the life of the number of projects. But um, it's not the recommendation that has come forward, and so I, I'm certainly open to um the, any other argument that I have missed that Mr. Given might be able to, to advance.
Uh, let's go, Mr. Given, and then we'll back to you.
That Deputy Mayor Wilson, so the, the mayor started off by saying, you know, if there's some argument the mayor missed, and I certainly wouldn't make that, that could be a career limiting move, but he did at the end of it invite me to, you know, again. But the only other thing that I would add um is uh, as reflected in the budget presentations, the municipality is well underneath our um annual mortgage payment debt limit. Um, having said that, uh, we do also have that other debt limit of our total debt capacity. Um, and that is responsive to municipal revenues. And so uh, the more money that the municipality collects, both through uh utilities um and through the tax side, um, would increase our total debt limit. Uh, the only thing that administration would want it, would, would check any proposal against before we return to, to council would be the um predicted impact on our ability to borrow if there were some other major project that we needed in the short term. So if we, you know, um, you know, if we have $27 million of debt capacity and we borrow for a bunch of smaller $1 million projects that we could have paid for in the current year through taxes, it might impact our ability to undertake a $10 million project at a time when council decides that it's desirable to do so. Um, and specifically, uh, I think I would, you know, reference uh housing and the consideration of, of any potential JCHC or other um housing project the municipality might partner in. That would be the only um major thing that would, that would come to mind for me. And that would be the type of thing that administration would like to uh, with, that administration would uh consider and confirm back to council before asking council to ultimately approve a budget. So council could certainly amend the budget, capital budget here. Direct administration to amend the budget presented to council. At the council meeting, administration could reflect back to council what the impacts of those, you know, any of those changes might be. But that, your worship, that would be the only area where I would, would raise a, a caution, not even a flag, but a caution uh of, of an area that needs to be investigated before um just broadly swapping out a grant funded source for a debt funded source.
Acknowledged and very much appreciated. Yes, that, that is a component that I had not addressed my mind to, that, that debt limit is, is significant um as is debt servicing limit. So I, I do appreciate um that course correction. Thank you.
Counselor Keller MP?
Thank you, Mr. Given for that. Uh, true Deputy Mayor, uh, Wilson to Mr. Given. If we were to borrow and any debt that we have, are, are we able to pay it out? So if we um got alternative revenue or if we got, um, you know, we went year round with the paid parking and our revenues were up, that a year from now or two years from now, we could pay down the debt earlier. Is that a possibility? If we were to take um a loan out uh to cover some of these capital projects?
Deputy Mayor Wilson, for Counselor Keller MP, um, so my understanding, uh, and actually we confirmed this earlier this year related to another project, is that there is, there is no financial benefit to the municipality to pay down the debt early. Um, when you take on, take on borrowing, um, it describes, you know, the total, I mean, the total amount of principal and interest that you'll pay over the term. And you are welcome to clear up that debt as early as you like, as long as you pay the full amount that it described as principal and interest. So the, 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 um, and I, so there is not a, a financial savings to paying out earlier.
Thank you for that, Mr. Given.
Counselor Demota, did I miss you? Just give you.
No, this is like, I, I just wanted to, to spur some, some creative thought, that's all. And I'm just, I'm, I'm looking for different ways, and I, I like what's, what's been thrown around. And I still think that there's, there's an opportunity, and, and even though, like, um, you know, we might hinder some, some future projects that are still unknown. Um, sorry about that. Hold on a second. Um, I just, to me, I think, uh, you know, considering the uh, the world economy right now and, you know, our, our main, um, you know, industry might be, uh, you know, having some issues going forward still. We've heard from some residents that, you know, they don't want to lose their services and they're willing to pay. And uh, you know, I'm just looking at, at the future right now and then what's in front of us. So we know we're still in a pandemic. We don't know what kind of future capital projects we're going to have, right? Or things that they're going to come up. So we're, we're very aware of what's around us and, uh, you know, what our economy might be like uh within the next year or two. So I, I think that we need to be conscious about those things. And, you know, if, if um, if our main revenue driver for the community is going to be uh hindered in the, in the near future, but people don't want to lose their services, then we have to think about other ways of maybe uh finding um a compromise on how to make those things balance, right? So that's just, I'm looking for ideas to kind of mitigate some pressures in different areas.
Yeah, Counselor Keller MP and then Counselor Melnick.
I just want to comment also, like, the other night I was discussing the budget with a couple of people and um, at the dinner table, somebody said to me, so you're going to put the budget up 20%? I can accept that. So you're not going to put it up for the next four years after that? And I'm kind of going, well, no. And if we're going to start looking at priority based budgeting for the future, I think we can start off, because even though we can, it'll be 13 and a half because we apply the 500,000 most um funding, however, it's still 20%. So next year, they're building on that 20% that we've already charged this year. So I think we do have to compromise here on how.
Uh, Counselor Keller MP, we lost your audio.
Right now, our community can't for 20% and we can't go up 20% per year going forward. So we have to figure it out whether it's true loan or true grants on how we're going to do this. Thank you.
Counselor Keller MP unfortunately used, cut out for the majority of that.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I'm sorry, I, my computer died. I'm on a bird computer. Um, I'm just saying that like 20% that we're proposing this year to go up. Sorry, can I just try and stop that other phone in the other office?
We can't hear you now.
We have most money and it's accumulated on our taxes. So we need to co- create a balance because we are having our strat plan and come January, and we're going to have priority based um budgeting going forward. And we all have projects that we want done. So we're going to have to come to a balance on how we're going to operate for the next four years, what we want to see go forward in capital. If this is it, so then if we approve this, we put the 20% on this year, does that mean we're going to do no more capital projects? Because people can't afford 20, 20 and 20. Are we going to put 20 and 20 on for the next four years? Um, that's not sustainable. So we're either going to have to come up with alternative revenues, some grants, um, whether we take a loan out and it's spread over 20 years, and yes, future generations has to pay for it. But we're going to have to come up with a plan on how our community can afford this. Um, we're not out of COVID yet, and everybody is scared of this new variant. And if the travel industry shut down, what are we going to do? That's just some of my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Keller MP, uh, Counselor Melnick.
Thank you. Sorry, I'm having a little trouble with mute there. Um, thank you, uh, Deputy Mayor Wilson. Uh, I just want to return to the debt funding for the water meter project because we need to also recognize that that is a revenue generating project as well. In that, the fact that we're losing um revenues because we're not metering our water properly. Once we do that project, and the sooner we do that project, we'll see that benefit year over year over year, which will be spread equitably across the entire community based on consumption. And, and um, I think that that's, when we look at alternative sources of revenue, um, tightening up how we collect revenues within the community is part of that. Um, I certainly liked that conversation that we had around that particular project and, and thinking about innovative ways of accomplishing a number of things, including keeping the debt on uh the net tax envelope down. Um, being careful with our borrowing, um, but also looking at ways of equitable um collection of costs from our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselors? Counselor Hall?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor, uh, Wilson. This might be a question for my council colleagues. I'm just regarding an increase of taxes. So in 2021, or in 2020, the year of COVID, taxes decreased by 12%. Is that the right number? I, I can't remember. I did, well, I did watch. So are we needing to raise taxes to get back to where we, where we left them that year? I don't, like with the 20% each year over time, I'm not sure if that, is that actually what would happen if we raise our taxes by 20% this year? We'd have to do it again next year. I'm all for borrowing if it makes the most sense, because I certainly don't want to see a huge increase on our, our taxpayers. But I definitely know that residents screamed for their services when they were cut two years ago.
Thank you, Counselor Hall, and just answer that question, I guess. It, no, it, uh, if we come up, uh, 15, 18, 20 this year, it doesn't set any, you know, bar for next year. Um, w- we are coming back out of a hole in which we went to in 2022. We're just climbing our, our, our way out of there. Um, we're, we're only getting closer to just past, I guess, where we were in 2019. Um, so it does compound as uh, as uh the years go on. Um, but yeah, I, I guess it's not full answer to your question, but um, counselors, anything further to add to, look, oh, sorry, Counselor Hall, just, and then Counselor Ramon?
Thank you. What would be, I, I'm, I'm sure the answer is, it depends, but what would be a acceptable? Thank you. What would be, I'm, I'm sure the answer is it depends, but what would be a acceptable increase each year? Or what was the projection we've been on before COVID happened?
I guess Mayor Ireland might have the, the most lengthy history on, you know, inappropriate or an average increase every year. I, I've seen, you know, five, maybe average of five over my, my four years. And Mayor Ireland, could you speak to that?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson. I would defer to administration. I, I can't keep all of the numbers in my head. I, I know that I saw it in the media in the last year or so. An average that suggested maybe four or five percent annually. But I, I cannot confirm that without doing research. And better that those technical issues be left to the experts than to, to me. But thanks for trying.
All right, Mr. Given's there.
Well, I won't go too far into that, recognizing a lot of that predates my history here. What I was going to say is that there are a certain number of drivers to the municipal budget. They're really a lot like inflation. The municipality is the same as any business. Or homeowner is subject to increasing energy costs, increasing labor costs, increasing insurance costs, and, and those ultimately either need to be reflected in the budget and, and reflected in increasing tax requisitions. Or if, or council has to have a discussion about the range of services that the municipality provides. And choosing to reduce the services that it provides so that, you know, you can accommodate the increase in cost for the services that you do choose to continue to provide in the future. So, so broadly speaking to Counselor Hall's question, and I'm not speaking to what has been acceptable to councils in the past. That's certainly not my place to speak to, but I think from an administrative perspective, we're aware that there are inflationary costs every year. It does, it will not cost less to operate in 2023 than it will in 2021. And so for council, the options available to you are either pass that cost on to taxpayers or identify new revenue opportunities to collect from others, such as paid parking is a good example of that. Or choose to do, deliver less services so the net cost to taxpayers stays the same. So that's really the range, at, at a high level, the range of options that are available to you. As I presented in the budget presentation, the RBC and others are predicting that inflation will continue at a, at, at pre pandemic, sorry, at, at levels higher than we were seeing pre pandemic. So probably in that two and a half to three percent for 2022, they feel that it may cool off slightly following, but that, as you're getting a year out trying to forecast global inflation is going to be pretty difficult. You know, so administration's best guess would be that we will be regularly dealing with basic inflationary factors of, you know, from one and a half to three percent every year. If we were able to deliver, continue to deliver our municipal services as they currently stand without adding new services or deleting others, administration would expect that cost of delivering the same suite of services would likely increase by that one and a half to three percent each year.
Counselor Hall.
Thank you for that, Mr. Given. And again, I apologize if these are questions you all have the answers for. I'm just trying to understand this process. So I assume then it costs more to run Jasper right now than it did two years ago. And if a loan makes the most sense, that would be great. Coming from where I've come from, with a business that didn't work, loans didn't really seem to make the most sense at that point. So I'm not sure if it's different within this, I mean, municipal budget.
Mr. Given, and then we'll go to you, Counselor Gemota.
Sure. Well, from, I guess from a municipal perspective, you know, to be very frank, the difference between the municipality and, and a business or, you know, a personal home and you pay all finances, the municipality is a government, does have the ability to levy taxes that people are required to pay. You don't have that same ability in a business. You, you know, are able to sell as much stuff as you have people coming through the, the door demanding your stuff. And you can't make people buy from you, for better or worse. And I know that there's lots of public opinions about it. I mean, we are, you know, governments do have the ability to tax, and that is why a municipality is different. We are fully in control of our revenue. And that's the difficult questions that arrive in front of council is about, well, what is the right amount of revenue? We're not, we're not helpless. You know, council is in full control. And I think it really is a discussion about council, trying to understand what the community's tolerance is and desires are for services and, and tolerances for taxes. That, that really is the central question for council. I mean, at, at a fundamental level, we can collect as much revenue as we want to, as much, you know, by, by raising taxes. Administration is fully aware that there is a breaking point there where the community is no longer willing to bear that cost. But that makes us significantly different from a business or a home when we're thinking about our finances.
Counselor Gemota.
Okay, well, the, the question was asked, what we've been averaging. So from my experience, I've seen as low as two and as high as six, I believe, maybe seven. I remember that when proposed budgets came in, in the past at 12% prior, pre COVID, people did freak out or, you know, the term was using lost their minds kind of thing. And so, and then we worked really hard with administration to, to bring those down. During a few elections, we did have a lot of controversy on the amount of taxes that have gone up over time, again, pre COVID. So this, this year was a little different. People are a little more quiet on, on that because I think a lot of what we were doing was based online or campaigning was a little different. So it was really hard to really gauge what was happening in the community. Now, you know, I just, one thing that I've been challenged in getting the information out. You know, Counselor Hall, you said that, you know, people were upset and screamed that their services were being cut. And, and one point of clarification, I do feel remiss about the information that was out in the community and how maybe some media sources portrayed what happened. I think as somebody that was a mover of the past, you know, motions for, you know, past budgets in particular, 2022, the idea was adapting to what was happening around us. And because we were forced to be closed in certain areas, the idea was to amend a budget that was going to reflect what was happening. And with the intent of putting some of that, those tax dollars away for reserves when we had to open it and open services up. So the services were always there to be opened up when they were able to be opened up. And we did put money aside for that. That was the intention. So it didn't get reported well that way. Didn't get communicated well that way. So I believe that there were many, many members of the community that felt they were being, you know, maybe mis-served by council and that was not the intention or the action that transpired. So going forward, yes, we understood at the time that, that those reductions were going to cause increases in the future. Now, you know, going, we're talking about the, the capital budget here today and I really wanted to get this thing going. I, I think if somebody wants to make a motion to accept this and then move it to, to council, I think it'd be a good idea. If there's any amendments to be made, you know, I'd, I'd like to hear them. But we still have time to, to debate them and work things out next week if we find other alternate ideas. Having said that, I think I'm, I'm going forward to next week. I'm looking for, you know, some type of compromise where, you know, administration, council and, you know, our stakeholders. We can all work together and, and finding some understanding where we all need to make a compromise. But understanding that taxes are going to go up. And to what extent, I'm not sure. I'm happy with what's been presented for us in the capital budget right now. And I think it's important to, to move this forward and then have a debate on it or discuss it next week. Thank you.
You're getting very close to making a motion, Counselor Gemota. Would you like to? No. An opportunity, Mayor Ireland.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson. Well, in the interest of moving this forward, as Counselor Demota stated, I am prepared to make a motion now, recognizing that this will come back again. That is the capital budget next week, but for the time being, in an effort to move at least one bit of this forward, I will make a motion that committee direct administration to fund the residential water meter project by borrowing to be supported through utility rates and that committee directs administration to redirect the use of the federal gas tax funding to other appropriate tax funded capital projects in the 2022 capital budget. So in essence, and if I may speak to the motion, I, I support the need for the residential water meter upgrade. It does make sense and it's a revenue opportunity. But by funding that through personally borrowing supported by utility rates, I think we advanced the principle that we have pursued for years. And that is that utilities ought to be self-funding. And this will have a positive impact through a number of years on utility rates and revenue for the municipality. At the same time, we then transfer a sizable amount of capital funding to the current year capital program to offset specifically tax funded programs. I, I will have some further questions of Mr. Given and administration about how that might look. But for the time being, I think if we can get another $800,000 into the capital budget, when we come back to this next week, we'll be looking at a significantly different picture. So that is my motion that we direct administration to fund that water meter project by borrowing, supported by utility rates and redirect those funds to the 2022 capital budget in respect to tax funded projects where appropriate.
Thank you for that, Mayor Ireland. I think that's a great motion and it has my support. We'll go to Counselor Gemota, please.
Yeah, maybe not a, a, a topic for debate, but just, I just wanted to get some more information from administration through you, Deputy Mayor, to, to maybe Mr. Given if he's available. With this proposal, I'm just wondering what types of projects that are here right now that aren't within the utilities, part of the, the project that might be funded for this year. I know that you made some reference to, to what the, the qualifications are. But, you know, for, I'll let you answer that and then I, and then I'm just going to ask for an example, another example.
Sure, Deputy Mayor Wilson for Counselor Demota. So, so just hearing the motion now, administration would take some time to, to do an actual assessment of what would be most appropriate. So, so you are getting an off the cuff answer. They would need to be capital items that would be fixed. You know, so weight room benches, that's, that's a no-go. That's not going to be helpful. But items like automatic door openers, maybe. So what administration would do would be to go through the capital plan to identify if there were projects that were funded through a tax funded source like CRM or and identify if there's a way to bundle some of those projects and just check that package against the requirements of the federal gas tax funding program and then return back to council with a proposal. So, so, you know, it's certain, federal gas tax can't be used for roll, rolling stock for, for, you know, moving equipment. I would suggest that it likely can't be used for, for small things. It has to be a upgrade or improvement of a capital nature to, you know, to, to municipal assets. And so administration would have to apply that filter to the capital plan, which would be some work, but is absolutely possible for the time that we would come back to council next week.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, I was muted. Any other counselors like to weigh in on that motion? Counselor Hall?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson. This might be a question, kind of going back to something Counselor Kellere MP had spoken on earlier, the unfunded projects. Where there are a few that I think are important. Would that be the money that you're suggesting Mayor Ireland be moved towards tax funded projects, correct?
That is correct. So move the federal gas tax, $800,000 to the capital budget to be applied against tax funded projects. So it wouldn't apply to unfunded projects. The intent is not to, to fund a whole bunch of other unfunded. It's to reduce the impact of the tax supported capital projects that are, are in the budget.
But Counselor Hall, I think as well, you, you may feel rushed. I know there are a couple items unfunded, say like bike skills park allocation or anything like that. I think Mayor Ireland may be open to a friendly, an amendment of his motion. Although, correct me if I'm wrong, anyone, Mr. Given?
Just in terms of process, Deputy Mayor Wilson, you know, to make it manageable for council because there are independent ideas. I would suggest that there, there council can give us independent direction on multiple ideas. Mayor Ireland has one specific idea that he's proposed. I'd suggest that council should discuss and debate and vote on that idea. And then if there are other items that council wishes to, to specifically amend, people could forward independent motions to make those amendments. So if Counselor Hall had an unfunded item or any other council members had an unfunded item that they wanted to see funded, they could make those motions. And what admin, and if there are items that council wanted to delete, council could make those motions as well. What administration would do is following this committee meeting, would, you know, assess the cumulative impact of all the council direction and amendments and would revise the capital budget for presentation to council next week. So council would be in a position to consider giving it final approval inclusive of all the amendments that you might make today. So I would suggest voting on them independently, deal with one, move on to the next. And then when council feels that they have made all the amendments that they wish to make, administration will take that away, revise the capital budget so it can be presented in its revised format for, for council. One thing that I would also just reflect in terms of expectations, administration, you know, the, the publishing deadline for next week's council agenda is Friday. So council may have to expect administration to, to be presenting at the council table rather than in the published agenda package. It will just be very challenging for us in three days to do the assessment, analysis and revision. And so if council was comfortable with, you know, with that recommendation, administration, I think would be able, would be able to turn it around and come back to council on the Monday and present it at the table on, on that day. It just would be challenging to have it published in advance of the weekend.
Thank you for that. Other counselors, Counselor Gemota.
Yeah, I just wanted to speak to the motion itself now. Thank you for the clarification, Mr. Given. And going forward, I think this is a good idea to approach it this way. And because I think that some of the initiatives that Mr. Greathead and his staff have taken to help, you know, maybe recover or generate some alternate sources of revenue or, or increase revenue in some areas, I think you're going to come forward, you know, later this year or later in 2022 and more so in 2023 where we might be able to see more real numbers. I, I'm interested to see what the, the bulk water and the sandy dump are going to bring to the table. And I, I think that down the road, that our utilities will be better served by those initiatives. And if we take out a loan now, or even just contemplate that and use better served by those initiatives. And if we take out a loan now, or even just contemplate that and use that that gas tax funding somewhere else could be beneficial, not just short term, but long term to help us get over that hump. And, you know, like we we might not like what we what we get in front of us in a week and, you know, and not to waste administration's time, but we could still go back and say, you know what, these are great ideas, but let's stick to Plan A and get that 800,000 back towards where it was initially proposed. So I'm I'm in for for going in this direction. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor. I muted. Yeah. Sorry, counselors, any other questions before I send it back to Mayor Ireland for closing? Those are more remarks, Mayor Ireland? I'll call the question. All in favor? Everyone's in favor. They're not opposed. The motion carries. Thank you for that. So we're at 12:30 here. What are we looking at? We're doing pretty, what do you, how do counselors feel? Are there quite a few more items to discuss? I know Counselor Hall would like to maybe bring up some unfunded items. To does it look like it's going to be, well, everybody want to carry on for another half hour? See how it goes? We'll do it. All right, counselors. Mayor Ireland.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Wilson. Going back to Mr. Given's recent comments about the possibility, at least of a series of particular amending motions before we we close this debate and move matters on to council next week. I had a question going back to comments made by Counselor Demota earlier in the day about priorities. And for Mr. Given, the question is, if council was so inclined to simply say, we would like to see a reduction of some amount in the tax-funded portion of the 2022 capital budget. What process would administration use to determine what's individual projects went forward and which did not. So for example, if we were to say we are not the experts on judging between projects. But we would like to see a $200,000 reduction in tax-supported projects for the next year. What process would or could administration use to fulfill that sort of direction from council?
Thanks your worship through Deputy Mayor Wilson. So I think in terms of process, it would be a relatively brief process. Identifying, you know, a discussion between the directors and I. The, you know, criticality of any proposed project. And, you know, the impacts of delaying that project to some future year. And I think that from an administrative perspective, outside of the major renovation projects. You know, the capital plan for new projects is not, and again, I say outside of the major renovation, acknowledging that that is a major project that that shows up. But outside of those major, major projects. There are not a bunch of smaller projects. You know, the accumulation of small projects. And I will go out on a bit of a limb, might be under you know, under $2 million. So, you know, the ability to really identify ones that will have any individual project that will have a substantial impact on the net tax requisition will be small. You know, we'll use the gas tax funding where appropriate, and that would probably have the major impact. Other than that, it'll be a collection of of a whole bunch of little things that administration, you know, might offer. But we would like to have that opportunity to undertake that analysis if council gave that direction. I think the other thing that I would reflect to council is that anytime that we reduce the amount of tax that we requisition in a given year. You know. I'll just return to the discussion about the Counselor Keller MP brought up about, you know, people's level of tolerance for a a 20% tax increase in this year. Is it going to be 20% every year? Well, no. Obviously, that that wouldn't be sustainable and administration certainly would agree with that. But if you build up, if if you set the tax requisition at $9.4 million this year. That 9.4 is the same next year. Right? Like that's that's the base. You've built the base. If we reduce the requisition this year to 9.2 or nine or 8.5, whatever that number is. At some future year, if if we believe that the overall operating cost of the municipality is 9.4. At some point, we're going to have to return to that. And so, you know, reducing that net tax requisition this year, there will be a requirement to return to that unless we decide that there are either new revenues to fill that gap, so we could return to that overall operating expense. But using revenue other than tax sources, or we decide we no longer need to have this high level of annual operating expense because we're doing things differently. We're doing less or we've found some efficiencies or whatever else. So my caution for council would be when we think of, I appreciate the need to reduce the net tax requisition or desire to reduce the impact in 2021. Keep in mind that every time you do this, though, if we say, if if there is a general consensus that the operating cost of the municipality requires that the operating or cost of the municipality, the operating expense of the municipality is probably going to be $25 million. You know, we haven't changed the operating cost of the municipality. It's still $25 million. And so we need to collect a certain amount of tax dollars to do that. So I just the significant increase this year does curtail the need for significant increases in future years. That I guess that's, I'm sorry, it took a long time to get around to that. But if you set a base here that that there will be less demand on large increases going forward. If we set the base low this year. It will, council and administration will have their work cut out for them, trying to figure out what we do with the space in between. Because we, you know, generally if we believe that it's $25 million to operate the the municipality, we have to figure out how to make up that difference, which is the challenge that we create for ourselves.
It's a great description there, Mr. Given. And I would suggest, though, a little bit further is that we we are coming back up to that cost to operate the municipality. So that's why we have such a large increase this year. We are down. We did make that cut. And we're coming back up. And so for any counselors that you know, I'm sure everybody kind of knew what had happened, but that's where we're coming back up to. And I appreciate the description from Mr. Given and Counselor Demota.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Wilson. Yeah, and you know what? I just for just to be really clear, though. You know, when we're talking about setting the base, the base is not 9.4. The base is actually 9.9. Because there is $500,000 worth of COVID relief already built into this proposed budget. So when we're contemplating the overall budget right now, it's it's closer to 19%. So I I'm sorry that I keep banging that drum, but I'm just, I'm, I want people in the community and and I want people to understand that, you know, that's what we're working from. And I I think that, you know, personally, maybe reflecting on what BAF has done the last couple of times is is ask administration to go back to the drawing board and and encompassing both the the capital budget and the operations budget and just say, where can you find $400,000 or $500,000 right now to help us climb out of this because we're we're not out of the woods yet. And if we can't, you know, then we're going to have to find out, find different ways to to really levy the taxes so we don't lose the services. So if if what we're hearing is that we don't want to lose services, then we have to find a way to, you know, the residents to keep their services and then and then work with, you know, the environment that we're in. So that's that's kind of where I'm kind of leaning towards.
Okay, well, I'll throw a question out there regarding the unfunded items. Mr. Given, could you shed a little more light on this three unfunded items, Robson Park refurbishment plan, Lions Park refurbishment plan and Bike Park Small Capital, Capital? What's the idea behind those items? And if anybody felt like they'd like to see any of those move forward? Who I guess you've explained how we go about doing it, but.
Sure, sure. Deputy Mayor Wilson, so briefly. Both Robson Park and Lions Park are municipal properties. They have both seen, you know, significant use and increasing use in the community. There is not an existing plan for types of improvements that might be made. My understanding is that Robson Park over the last while has seen a number of trees removed. Has become a bigger open space and there is a desire from both council and the community to see that as a community focal point with more activities and action happening there. Administration would like to see is proposing with that $10,000 that that would enable us to to draft up a plan that would guide the future redevelopment and capital planning for Robson Park. The same with Lions Park, except in that case, we are partners in that park with the Lions Club. They have a commitment to do fundraising and to do work bees there. But there is no existing plan that says, well, what types of things should the club be fundraising for? And what types of capital improvements should be made? And so for the both of those parks, administration had identified that it would be useful to set aside some dollars to develop essentially what would be a forward-looking capital refurbishment plan that would we would be able to inform, use to inform our future budgets. And that the community partners could use to inform their fundraising efforts. So that's the refurbishment plans. So they basically would be projects that would develop a master plan for how we would reinvigorate those two park spaces and in collaboration with the Lions Club, specific to Lions Park. The Bike Park Small Capital. Administration did have the on our outstanding items list at the end of this agenda, you'll see that we have an outstanding item with respect to a bike skills park. In collaboration with the with the cycling club. Administration would have brought forward proposed operating agreement between the the cycling club and the municipality to this meeting. But just given that we're doing capital budget, we wanted to defer so that it would get its due due consideration. But looking forward, administration is proposing that the municipality would partner with the Bike Skills Club. They would be responsible for the major capital works of creating the Bike Park. But as the municipality, we would likely want to be a partner in that by erecting a sign at the entrance to the park. Ensuring that there's waste receptacles as appropriate and other small capital works that would see us be a partner in the startup of that park with the major capital works to be done by the cycling club. So it is an amount of money that would be available to administration. Should council choose to enter into that operational agreement and make improvements for the proposed bike skills park on the GA parcel. I hope Counselor Wilson, that answers the the questions that you're looking for.
Yeah, in in specific, I appreciate the the, you know, the the budget being there for the bike skills part. It could be pushed till next year, I guess. I'd like pending construction of like, it's not, it's not startup costs. It's not assistance in getting permitting or anything like that. It's like, it's fine tuning, getting a sign up garbage bins, etc., etc. So there may not be something that we need to move forward this year. If the everything goes well, instructions commences, well, then we can revisit it, I guess. You know, further down the line, but.
Yeah. For all of council's benefit, you know, any item that's unfunded and remains unfunded, you know, if council chooses not to fund it, we can continue to have that item on the the budget. So that if in some future year, there's funding available. Or if there's more clear direction, you know, from council that an item becomes a priority through the course of the year, then we would show up next year. Potentially with it as a funded item, or we may have a community group come and and approach council on on that one specifically. But administration was being a bit proactive to try to reflect that there is, you know, the the operations of the municipality don't stop. There's stuff that was under discussion before and that may conclude soon. And we wanted to make sure that 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 was reflected in the capital budget for council's consideration.
Sorry, Counselor Melnick.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Wilson. In the spirit of of what you were just mentioning, Mr. Given and Mayor Ireland's comments about reflecting back on the the current capital budget. You have been tasked with applying the gas tax to certain projects. But I'm wondering if if a second look. And again, I'm not familiar enough with each of these projects, but I just go to the Activity Center page and I see smaller items. And and as you mentioned, Mr. Given, we're not going to find millions of dollars. But but if we are going to be doing work in the Activity Center, some of the capital items that may be in for 2022, if they're not part of the larger picture for the Activity Center redevelopment. Is it appropriate for us to be looking at the keyless entry for these buildings? And that project may actually involve a number of of buildings or replacement of doors in the Activity Center until we actually know what the redesign will look like. And again, it's, I think it's a, it's a in the spirit of administration, looking back at the projects which all have merit and looking at it and saying, this might be a 2023, not a 2022. Will it save significant amount of dollars? Probably not. It's still on the radar. And I think it helps us achieve the overall maybe efficiency in in that large project with anything relating to these buildings.
Mr. Given? Yeah, thanks Deputy Mayor Wilson and Counselor Melnick for the question. You know, I think administration would like, so administration would like an opportunity to consider the impact of the, you know, the gas tax funding motion that was passed. Because it may be that the that a portion of the way to do that most probably would be the accumulating a bunch of these small projects that were funded through the CRM R funding source, which is ultimately tax-funded. Accumulating them into one sort of larger project that we could package as facility improvements, you know, rec facility improvements. Rather than and and we may, that might be one of the main strategies we'd have to employ to actually be able to use that federal gas tax fund in the current year. The other one might be road repairs. There is the $200,000 in road repairs in the opposite side. That one might be another area that we would, that is another area that I would want to look at. So I'd be a bit. I guess, you know, I would be a bit cautious about council deleting a bunch of other smaller projects that might have been our way to actually apply some of that federal gas tax fund, if that makes sense.
Counselor Melnick.
Thank you, Mr. Given. And I'll just conclude Deputy Mayor Wilson. And I think that that's in the spirit of what we're trying to achieve here is, you know, how can we best utilize the federal gas tax by taking a look at anything that might be able to be bundled in such a way to to reduce the tax envelope.
Thank Counselor Melnick, Counselor Demota.
Yeah, I was just, I was just going to point out that, you know, we do have, there were some things in the capital projects set out for sidewalk replacement repair. I I think there were some connectivity projects as well to address some areas in the community that still need sidewalks, whereas sidewalks aren't available, but people still use that side of the street. There's, there's an area on bottom. There's a couple of spots on Patricia Street. So you know, those aren't in today's proposals, but have been talked about and are part of a an overall future plan. So you know, could those things come back up? I know that those are millions of dollars. At the same time, you know, we've are within the roads and repairs and sidewalks. There's 230,000 that could potentially be used right away. That's not here nor there. My question, I guess, through you Counselor or Deputy Mayor to Mr. Given is, are there um timelines associated, deadlines associated, when we're supposed to be using that gas tax? Do they have an expiration date?
Deputy Mayor Wilson, uh there are, and I don't have them at hand. But I do not believe, um I do not believe that we're at imminent risk of losing those funds. Um I, uh after councillor Melnick's question before, had a look at a a number of previous years of funding. It looks as though the municipality had been receiving about two hundred and forty, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year for a number of years. So obviously, the eight hundred thousand is an accumulation of a number of years' funding. Um certainly, the federal commitment um does not appear to be declining. The gas tax fund is set in federal legislation. The provincial commitment to M S I has been decreasing significantly and will continue to decrease over the next couple of years before potentially slowly increasing beyond that. Um so, no, I don't believe that we're in any imminent risk of uh losing the federal gas tax funds that we've accumulated. I would want to confirm that because it is an accumulation of multiple years. It wasn't as though it's, you know, current year funding. Some of that is is from a few years ago, and we may have some requirement to have it spent relatively soon, but I would need to confirm that.
And if I may finish off, um you know, I was, I was really appreciative of Mr. Given saying, talking about, you know, the the overall uh uh expenses to run the municipality, right? And then what we actually collect and setting bases and stuff. So there there are gaps that we need to address and whether they we grow them or shrink them. I think um it's really important, I think, for us as a council to campaign out to the community and and get stakeholder involvement. When we go to our planning sessions, I would like to put personally a lot of energy towards uh appealing to the province, working with our our other fellow uh resort area municipalities and and lobbying the the provincial government to help address the gaps that uh being a tourism provider or a a um hospitality or tourism based community um that we need to help fill those gaps and that, and this is where we're we're falling short and it's because we're uh we're providing a higher service to to, you know, not only the province, but the the country as a whole. Um being in federal parks, uh specifically Jasper and Bass. So I think these are really strong um components and uh reasoning uh for why we need to be looked at differently than other municipalities.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Wilson. My question through you to Mr. Given about a couple other unfunded projects, the arena sound system. What need, what does it need? And also the volleyball courts. And I wonder if those users pay a drop in fee to use the court.
Uh Deputy Mayor Wilson for councillor Hall. So the uh arena sound system. I went to a hockey game and I think somebody had a boombox playing last night. Um but uh the arena sound system has uh has been this uh the um the recipient of a power surge over the summer that essentially killed the main controller. And so the the rest of the system, I think, is in good condition. Administration has attempted to identify opportunities to replace parts of the main controller, um and that has been unsuccessful. So the arena sound system item, as shown on the budget, is uh is essentially replacing that main audio controller um for the sound system. That's what would be required to return to being able to announce hockey games and play uh music throughout the arena. Without that component, uh we will be using uh makeshift you know, interim measures, uh because it really is a core component that's gone that we can't sort of fix anymore. We need to buy new. Um on the uh on the uh volleyball courts. Um that is a proposed expansion that was brought forward by the uh volley, the local volleyball organization uh and presented to last council. Last council chose to refer that request here to budget. I would need to confirm whether or not uh the users pay a a drop in fee and I I have to admit, I just don't have that at hand, councillor Hall. But if anything, uh it is a, it would be a nominal fee. Um really essentially uh cost recovery, um but I don't have that information at hand and I can certainly make sure that I have it before we close off our meeting today.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Wilson, through you to um to Mr. Given primarily, I think. I appreciate that having um passed a motion to transfer the federal gas tax into the capital budget um is going to require a reconfiguration of the document before us. So I, and I I appreciate that it's going to take some time to do that work. At the end of which, we will have a different list of projects um which remain to be funded through reserves or C R M R. We can't get to that today. I recognize that. And so the two questions that I have, um is there anything in the carry forward um that is funded by reserves? That can be part of our discussion for this year's capital budget, twenty twenty-two capital budget. Or are those funds committed in in some sense? So I'm I'm thinking, for example, the the grounds project um has been carried forward, which includes twenty-seven thousand dollars for bleachers. I'm not certain that that is critical, but if it's if it's part of a carry forward, are we committed to it already? And I, you know, we have other funds for the log cabin and I'm not saying that those shouldn't perceive that some I C I P funding, I think. But in any event, um is, are the bleachers fair game for discussion? Once we know where the federal gas tax might be allocated.
Uh Deputy Mayor Wilson for Mayor Ireland. Yes, so so certainly any of the carry forward items, I mean, they are explicitly here for council approval to to literally carry them forward into the new year. Some of the carry forward items uh may have progress and we're just waiting on billing and uh you know, and and close out of projects. And so this is not reflective of new money that needs to be collected. Is administration seeking approval for council to carry over those projects from one calendar year to the next? The ball diamond bleachers, to my knowledge, we have not started that project, which is essentially purchasing them. Um and that may be an item that we could substitute funding. My initial suspicion would be that they're of more of a mobile nature and probably wouldn't be sort of viewed as a capital improvement to an existing facility. You know, there's sort of a uh F F and E, uh if I can use that term, you know, sort of uh furniture and fixtures kind of item uh which um uh might not be applicable for the the gas tax. I think your bigger question was, could administration, will administration consider the carry forward items uh to apply the gas tax? Yes, we will consider that. And I don't know that they will have a substantive impact on the twenty twenty-two tax requisition because they were money that was co- was collected and collected and committed in a prior year.
Well, thank you for that. Um but in fact, I was, I was thinking more um in terms of the earlier question I I raised. Um hypothetically, if council was to direct a monetary reduction of the capital budget, I I threw out the number two hundred thousand, because I can add up some small projects and councillor Melnick hit upon um one of them, that is the the keyless entry. Um there are some other things that um maybe don't need to proceed this year. Bleachers might be one of them. But until we see a revised list, it's hard to know um what is left that we might look at. So I'm I'm trying to think in terms of a motion to move us forward at the conclusion of today's meeting that will actually assist administration in getting prepared for next week. So um I'm I'm thinking along the lines that committee recommend council approve the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-six um capital budget as amended with respect to the uh introduction of the federal gas tax. And that committee direct administration to return um with a new list of proposed uh capital projects at our next meeting. And and that will simply be a realignment of of the sources of funding, I think. But at least then that would give us an opportunity to look at what is left that is intended to be funded by essentially reserves or or tax support, current year tax um funding. And what is what remains unfunded. But I I I don't know how to get further today without giving you an opportunity to come back with um a slightly revised format for us.
Yeah, uh Deputy Mayor Wilson for Mayor Ireland. I think you're you're exactly on point. And uh the second part of that motion, as you framed it, isn't required. I mean, committee has has given direction to administration to amend the budget in a certain way. We'll do that, uh and we would not keep it to ourselves. Uh we certainly will come back to you with that. And we would bring it back to you at the next opportunity, which we would see as the the upcoming council meeting next week. Um and for then the council could consider the amendments that we made and discuss debate whether, you know, they were supportive of them or whether council wished to see additional amendments. Yeah, so so I think uh once council today is satisfied that they've given direction for all the amendments that they might wish to make. The final motion is that the committee recommend council uh approve the budget as amended. Then administration would go away, would do the work of making those amendments, uh publishing a a new document to show you. And then uh council can discuss and debate that new document when they see it next week.
Councillors, anything further?
If there is nothing further that is specific um from councillors, that just to advance things and maybe get some closure for today. I will make a motion that committee of the whole recommend that council approve the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-six capital budget as amended. Um and I just, I just want to be clear with all of council, although I'm sure you already all know this, that simply voting in favor of the recommendation to advance this to council next week does not commit anyone to necessarily vote in favor of approving that budget next week. So we can still have discussion next week and make further amendments and and um deal with particular line items as we choose, but this gives an opportunity um to close discussion today, give some direction um to administration so they can be prepared um with new documents for us next week. So I'm not trying to position anybody um by a vote today um to feel compelled to necessarily approve the capital budget next week uh when we sit as council.
Yeah, thanks. Thank you for that.
Yeah, I'm I'm ready for that. I'll support that. And uh, you know, I was, I was about to make the same uh motion and I'm glad that the mayor did that with with some clarification. I thought there might have been a a little bit more of an adjustment there, but I'm I'm okay with uh how it's presented and uh with the amendments and uh I'm willing to vote in favor to move it forward today.
Councillor Hall.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Wilson. This is a question, a technical question. Is this where? Because I I would like to see the arena sound system funded. Where would I, is that next week I bring that forward or do I, can I do that now?
Just from an administrative perspective, Deputy Mayor Wilson, it would be preferable that we get all of council's amendments and changes that they want to make now. So when we go away to do our work of changing the budget and showing up, we're hopefully close to a final budget that council may be in a position to accept. If there are things that you, that a council member wished to to see included or excluded, uh leave that possibility open. Uh it should be now so that we get as much information from council as possible about what you want to see changed. Um rather than seeing one change and then coming back and doing additional changes and then additional subsequent changes after that. So it would be preferable, we get all the amendments or changes uh that anybody wanted to see on the table now. That way administration can take them away and work on them and be in a position to present council with something that uh may be close to what council would consider ultimately approving.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Wilson. This past week or yesterday, we had a little hockey game between our little girls and little boys and um uh Mr. Given was there. Our team hired a D J to sit in the sound booth and run music because we don't have a sound system that works. And with our brand new facility, it's really important. We were at a, we had a, our, my son's hockey tournament this weekend. And it's difficult without music or a microphone to make announcements. I think that's an important um unfunded project that we should move forward on. I also want to address the Lions Park. With, I know we're going to be addressing a letter from a youth today regarding basketball and we did see some correspondence at the beginning of our term regarding the basketball courts, Lions Park, and I think that's another important an important unfunded item I want to add to the funded items.
Thank you for that. I'm gonna need some assistance. Mr. Given.
Deputy Mayor Wilson, um there is a a motion on the floor made by Mayor Ireland uh to refer uh the budget forward to council. If Mayor Ireland was willing to uh, you know, uh withdraw his motion, so councillor Hall or or any of the council members can make any other amendments. That would be appropriate. Or councillor Hall could make a amending motion to councillor, to Mayor Ireland's motion that's on the floor. Um so, you know, uh it's sort of whichever way you'd like, potentially the um, you know, uh dealing with each motion independently might be the cleanest. Um but it's, e- either one is fine. Um there's a motion to refer the budget as amended. Um councillor Hall could say uh move to uh include the additional amendment of funding X capital item. Um and then you could have discussion debate on on councillor Hall's amendment, uh and it gets voted up or down. And Mayor Ireland's motion that's on the floor currently uh would would receive the the change as appropriate by council.
Okay.
From my perspective, um I think preferable that for the time being, I withdraw my motion. Um councillor Hall has a motion which further amends um what will be recommended to council and that's perfectly fine. Um there might be other amendments and I I hesitated making my motion, waiting for other amendments to come forward, but there might be something other than councillor Hall. So I think those independent motions, uh Mr. Given spoke to that sometime earlier today. Um and that, I think that is a preferred approach. So let's get all of the potential amendments and then we can recommend that council approve a a capital budget as amended, knowing what all of the amendments are. So um with the consent of uh yourself, um Mr. Deputy Mayor and council, I will withdraw my motion, but be prepared to make it again to include all of the amendments that we might make.
Okay, thank you. That makes the most sense. Everybody happy with that. Okay, uh councillor, when I see your hand up, uh that I would like to go to the, when our councillor Hall's motions first, unless uh you have something to discuss. Go ahead.
Yeah, no, I just, just for clarity, um you know, for, I don't, I don't want to sound like I'm bragging or some or anything, but I I did use that booth for quite a year, quite a few years when when I was doing the uh that when I was the voice of the Jasper Wolves or whatever. And and I find that, you know, regardless even for regular tournaments and and things uh of those natures uh and and other events, that that sound system is is really important. Um and when it's not maintained or used or or it's you, when you have a one that isn't so good in there, I I think that uh, you know, for overall use for the amount of money that's there, I think that's an easy spend. Um I'm just looking for, for some reason, I can't seem to locate the the Lions Park contribution there, what the
Let's stop there for a second, though. Um let's get when uh councillor Hall's uh motion on the table first.
I just wanted to see how much it was. Like I I can't find it in the line. That's all, just asking.
Okay, I'll give you some time.
What's the Lions Park located under? I don't have a paper copy, so I'm I'm trying to find it digitally here.
I think it's page thirty-four on the uh report and. Yeah, it's on page three. Figure you're looking at ten thousand. Okay, so let's, Counselor Hall, I'll give you the floor if you'd like to make a motion regarding the first item, I think, first and then we'll.
Thank you. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson. I would like to please move that council direct administration to. Amend the capital budget to reflect the arena sound system as a funded item for twenty twenty two.
Thank you for that, Counselor Hall. Would anybody like to speak to the motion? Mayor Ireland.
My question through you, Mister Deputy Mayor to Mister Given, is it possible? That. Funding of the sound system could be something incorporated. Into the catchall for. The federal gas tax fund.
Deputy Mayor Wilson for Mayor Ireland, it is possible and but I would not at this stage confirm that it is one hundred percent. You know, approved or sorry, able to be supported under that fund. But it that is the type of thing that administration would identify. If council chooses to fund a project. Administration over the next couple of days would identify an appropriate funding source for that project. And you'd see it reflected in the amended capital budget that would arrive at council. And it may be the federal gas tax as a as a part of that larger overall project. Or maybe from another source, but we would take the time to find the appropriate source for.
Thank you for that. Yeah, I'm in support of Counselor Hall's motion. I think it's it's almost a life safety item if he can't. Get announcements out to a group of people attending the. Sporting event, counselors. Before I call the question. Everybody understands the question. I'll call the question all in favor. There are none opposed. Thank you for that and I'll hand it back to Counselor Hall.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson. So regarding the Lions Park plan is what we're. I think is a really important. I guess it's not a project, it's a plan with the Lions Park. The increase of youth playing basketball in the summer. It's a very inexpensive sport and. We did read that, I think it was a newspaper that the French school had put out before the municipal election. As a project, as a, as a, an I project to learn about reporting and a youth did bring forward. That the Lions Park basketball courts, there's one good side, one one bad side, and it's always a race to get to the good side and the big kids get there first and. I think I think it's an important and important to move forward with that. Youth have asked, I'd like to listen to our youth.
Okay, thank you for that, counselors. So again, for clarification, is it is only to produce a a plan for refurbishment? Okay, anybody else? Sorry, Maryland.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson. I appreciate. The specificity of the request for improved basketball court set. The Lions Park. Is there, however, utility in? Doing the Robson Park plan at the same time. Are there any economies of scale to be achieved if we look at planning? Parks holistically rather than one off, and so if we're going to look at one, the Lions Park, should we? At the same time, look at. Robson Park. Reconfiguration and have. A more wholesome plan. Moving forward.
Mister Given.
Your worship, I guess, from an administrative perspective in terms of economies of scale. If both were proposed to go forward in the same year, then we would bundle them as a package. And working with consultants, so we, you know, there would be. We're not talking mobilization, demobilization, the same way if it's a capital project. But having one project team considering both parks at the same time would lead to some some economies to scale. I think it would probably be the most holistic approach. So rather than necessarily suggesting that would save a bunch of money to do both at the same time. I would suggest that we would get a better result because they would be thinking about both parks, you know, we'd have. One team think about both parks and their function in the community at the same time, and I think that might lead to better discussion. And I do want to clarify, appreciate that there are some some desired capital improvements probably in both parks. And what administration is recommending here would would be an incremental approach. Of saying, let's make sure that we know what we think we need to build before we start building stuff. And so this is exclusively a planning activity. The outcome that it would likely lead to would be a recommendation in future capital budgets. For for future capital projects. So this, you know, this planning work would happen in twenty twenty two. And would likely lead to recommendations for council to consider for the twenty twenty three construction season. And so just so that everybody has a clear understanding of what administration was recommending. It is a, it is a planning exercise that would guide our future capital investments. But your worship, the question about economies of scale, probably marginal economies of scale. Maybe economies of effectiveness in doing both at the same time.
Thank you, Mister Given.
An important scale. And so I I would simply. Put to Counselor. Hall whether she would be prepared to include. The Robson Park refurbishment plan as a friendly amendment to her motion.
Counselor Hall.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson. Yes, that sounds great.
Counselor Demona.
Yeah, please forgive me. I wasn't looking under roads and that's why I knew that I saw it there and I read it several times. It's under roads. The both parks are under the roads, a section of roads and grounds. So having said that, you know. Is there a specific reason why is there or did it inadvertently get there with a with a cut and paste and I'm just asking that because. You know, if these, if these were considered under roads, then this could be redundant in the fact that maybe we could be using gas tax money towards this. So just kind of a twofold question for information. And not to like make anybody look bad. I just, I was confused. I think for good reason.
Yeah, thanks very much, Deputy Mayor Wilson for Counselor Demota's question. Our our grounds crew handles, you know, maintenance of our green spaces, and so I think that might have been. That the justification of why it showed up there in the capital budget. I think it could have just as easily been. Reflected in the community development department, under the ground section of community development. Kind of a, kind of a neither here nor there. You know, but I appreciate that it was a bit confusing. We certainly aren't proposing to put roads over all of our green spaces by any means. The, but the activity itself. Administration again will, you know, if council decides it's a project that's worthy of doing, administration will identify an appropriate funding source. I would have a initial suspicion that such a small amount for something that is exclusively a planning activity. Would likely not qualify for the federal gas tax, which I think is more exclusively focused on hard infrastructure like physical things. And so I I would have my doubts that these two small projects would fit under that gas tax fund. But again, administration would take away all amendments. And find the best fit for the projects the council has has directed us to conduct in twenty twenty two, the best funding fit.
Thank you. Counselors, any more questions on Counselor Hall's motion? Everybody understand the question? I'll call the question all in favor. There are none opposed. Motion carries. Counselors, is there any more unfunded items, Counselor Hall has? Go ahead.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson. I do want to address the outdoor volleyball court expansion and I think for. Doesn't seem like a whole bunch of money. There's a really big group of users that use that volleyball court. I think their Facebook group is up over three hundred. Members. I know it's a busy space. I do like to support these outdoor activities that don't involve, you know, owning a mountain bike or having skis. That you can do in town and walk from your house that are fairly inexpensive.
Mister Given. Deputy Mayor Wilson, there was a question that was asked before that I didn't have the answer to related to this. About users. All the users do pay a two dollar drop in fee to come and access that space. So I didn't have that at hand before and thanks very much to our municipal team for. Providing me with that info so I could share it to council.
Counselor Demona.
Yeah, I I was kind of hoping not to address this today and unfortunately, like if you're in for something or against something, I mean, it's just gonna. Sometimes that could be a little divisive and. I I was just, I was a little apprehensive of how this actually got on here and and the way it was brought forward to council. And, you know, I I think the idea initially was to try to incorporate it within the. Within the. Rentals that going on at the activity center so. And and having said that, if if it wasn't, then I didn't think it was desirable at the time to to move forward on this, even though it is a small ass. You know, now we're at, we're getting close to thirty thousand dollars and where is it going to come from? I'm not sure. So. You know, I know that the people using the tennis courts for quite some time have been asking for help there and and I don't know how this one kind of got. Ahead of the tennis courts. The skate park. Committee did a lot of fundraising and, you know, got some help and went through several steps to get. Their, you know, asked from council to where they are. This one just kind of came haphazardly, you know, as a presentation on an agenda and then. Inadvertently became an ask, so. You know, just from process, you know, I do want to support this down the road. I'm not sure if it's something that. You know, I I think that should trump other initiatives that were other. User groups have been waiting on for. That's just my opinion.
Okay. Counselor Hall.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson. Yes, Counselor Demona, those are good points.
Counselor Melnick.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson, and a question through you to Mister Given. Is it possible that whatever realignment that may occur with the activity center? More more specifically, the aquatic center. Might have an impact on that space and we may be prudent to wait until we get the. The. Report back from what we voted on earlier in this meeting. Thank you for clarifying.
Yes, so Counselor Melnick, the the scope of the proposal from the volleyball group was relatively minor. Expanding to a small area. At this time, the administration isn't aware of anything that would expand the. Expand the physical footprint of the facility. Having said that, as I referenced before, there was a discussion. And we have asked our consultants to give us advice on the longevity of facility and whether we, you know, whether it might be better to build new. Which would be such a significant discussion that the nine thousand dollars would be the least of our worries to be, to be honest, but. Administration wouldn't foresee either using the nine thousand dollars before, you know, committing this nine thousand dollars to any group or use. Before the results of the aquatics facility assessment are known. And as I reflected in the earlier discussion about the, you know, the overall rental project, schematic design is intended to be complete. By the end of January, early February, and at that stage, we would have detailed information. About where, you know, what the footprint would be and whether it might impact this project. And the volleyball court expansion would not be happening in the, you know, in the late winter, it would be very, you know, late spring that that renovation would happen. So. I wouldn't see a conflict between them and administration would ensure that we didn't release any funds until the sort of full details were known. On the activity center and aquatic center footprint.
Great question, Counselor Melnick, and thanks for the response, Mister Given.
Well, again, I I kind of like the initiative, right? And and the fact that I see more and more people using that in. Within our services study, we saw that pickleball might be, you know, a big request coming up down the road and. You know, are we making plans to to go and facilitate that? You know, and there have been some asks there already. I am willing, because we used to have funds that used to, like, we used to address in March and in September where. Community members or groups can come and say, hey, I'd like to apply, you know, twenty for twenty five hundred dollars for this or that. I would like to see some fundraising initiatives from these guys. So I'm like, I'm with Counselor Hall. I really, I think it's it's worthwhile. Again, you know, if if they're committed to raising half of that money, then then, you know, just so it isn't a given, like any. Any group that comes and asks for money, it's going to get on to, you know, some sort of capital plan. There, there could be another process, I think, that we can help fuel at least, you know, it's not a lot of money, but, you know, I don't. I I think that there should be a little bit more involved towards that and I'm I'm willing to work with the groups if if they think it's worthwhile. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Demona, Counselor Hall.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson. I just have a question maybe for Mister Given. This is a user group that pays a small fee to use the space. Would, does the tennis court, I'm assuming the tennis court is also charged the two dollars per drop in, but with the skate park, would they be charging a two dollar drop in? As well.
To my knowledge, Counselor Hall, no, the municipality wouldn't have an opportunity to collect from skateboard users and I don't believe that we do in its current location.
Okay. Counselors. Counselor Hall, can I get you to repeat your question or your emotion?
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson. I. Move that I would like to move, please, that committee. Amend the capital budget to include the volleyball court as a funded item.
Thank you for that. Any anything further? I'll call the question all in favor. That is, that does not carry, that's three for three and a tie fails. So we can have that conversation in. In future. What, and I think it might be prudent with the renovations on the table as well, but thank you for that, Counselor Hall. Counselors. Maryland.
Just an observation. Deputy Mayor. We, you called the question and asked for those in the affirmative. Not in the negative. Just saying. If we are talking about. Unfunded projects now as we have been. I wonder about another one and I. I was not going to raise this until later in the process when we see where we're at, but. We've added now a couple of unfunded projects to be funded projects and I wonder about. The visual identity implementation. That shown under administration as unfunded in twenty twenty two. It seems to me that we approved recently going forward with. A new logo. It seems to me that somewhat wasted effort if we don't actually fund the implementation. Of that when we get it. And so if it can't be implemented in twenty twenty two. I think we, we lose an opportunity. So I see Mister Given with his hand up, but. Do we not intend to fund implementation when we get to the end of the visual identity process or? Is there another way to skin this cat? Otherwise, I I would be prepared to make a motion that. The visual identity implementation. Be moved to a funded. Capital item for the twenty twenty two budget.
Mister Given.
Deputy Mayor Wilson, maybe I'll just speak to that item a little bit. Counsel did have the discussion about the visual identity and logo and brand. Counsel, remember that that really is a, at this stage, a digital product. That is being driven and I believe at the committee meeting, my answer was about, you know, how else would we use that? That administration would really approach that as incremental implementation. So, you know, the website. Would be done all at once because it's a digital product project and and that is the main focus. Would be done all at once because it's a digital product project, and and that is the main focus of the rebrand and. Administration could either roll out the rebranding, you know, the next time somebody needs to get new business cards, then those new business cards. Are with the new logo and everybody else continue to use their old business cards. We have vehicles and facilities and signage across the community that do have the logo on it. And the intent of this unfunded item is to get a bit more of a head start rather than just. Updating the logo in a incremental sort of as things need to be replaced basis. So. You know, to give council level confidence, there's not an expectation from administration that we need to change everything all at once. Administration. You know, gives council the advice that we can slowly evolve the use of our logo and for some period of time, we would have. You know, the old one on some stuff and the new one on some other stuff. And as we get new stuff, we'll put the new logo on it, and the old stuff will just keep having the old logo. This capital item was to. You know, get a bit more of a start on some of the higher priority. Physical items that have the existing logo so that when a new one is adopted in 2022 that we could. Start to make a bit more of an impact and having some more brand consistency. Rather than that otherwise more incremental approach that administration described. Both are possible. It's here for council consideration of whether what your preference would be, is that that more incremental approach or something that there's some dedicated funds to. Start it up a little bit sooner.
Is that a pen? Council Melnick, go ahead.
Before we get into a point of order, I've not done this before, so I'll be corrected. So we are approaching four hours at this minute, and I think we need a motion to continue. And I'm happy to make that motion if that is a proper procedure, having not done this before.
Think you got it nailed. Appreciate the motion. The motion on the table is. To extend the meeting past four hours. Thank you for that, Council Melnick. A call to question, all in favor? Those opposed? Well, I think we got everybody in favor. That being said, it is 1:30. I'm for one of getting very hungry, but I don't want to call the conversation. Should we have a quick break and come back, or do you think we can wrap things up here pretty quickly? Counselors, timeout, Rico says, yeah. Everybody else in favor with a half hour break? Yeah, okay, so we'll be back two o'clock to wrap things up. Am I? Is there a question kind of on the table still that does needing answered? Do we want to? No, everybody's happy. Okay. Council Demota, sorry.
No, I I did want to address that that last line item that we talked about, but if we're going to go all week till we get to the other side of the break.
Now let's take a quick break. We'll return at two o'clock. I just got a message from counselor Kellerman P. She's indisposed for a few minutes, but people start without her. And she'll jump back on. So I saw Counselor Demota, he was there. Administration, are we back? Given is, all right, we'll call the meeting back to order at two o'clock. So where do we leave off? Richard, or sorry, Mayor Ireland's motion is had been pulled for now, waiting to be voted on. I guess I'll just check with counselors, are there any other unfunded items or any other? Items you'd like to discuss regarding the capital budget? Council Hall. You are muted. No. Counsel, you're good. We can't hear you. Okay, go ahead. No, we can see, we can see your mouth moving. Counselors. Just wait a few seconds, I think. Counselor Halls, you want to try again? Okay, I think we've got a mic down. We can't hear you. We'll let you log back in there. Counselor Hall, she's not there. Everybody mind if we just wait? Well, when we're waiting, is it, does anybody else have any other items they'd like to chat about? Okay, looks like Counselor Halls back at Mayor Ireland, go ahead.
If it is at all helpful, Deputy Mayor Wilson, when we left off, I had raised the issue of. The. Visual identity implementation, and I think Counselor Demota wished to say something about that. In any event, I just raised it. I'm satisfied with Mr. Given's explanation, so I I'm not going to make a. A motion with respect to that currently unfunded project. But I I know that Counselor Demota had his stand up on that topic.
I'm good. I I would have just sounded like a stick in the mud anyway, and I'm trying to move away from that, so.
So, well, I guess I'll use the time, we'll we'll wait a little bit longer and. So as it is, we have had these amendments made to the capital budget. We will then. Put Mayor Ireland's motion back on the table to recommend to council. Makes sense to everybody, yeah, okay.
I just got a joke in for somebody. It says, did you hear what NASA's new slogan will be once their budget is cut? NASA, the sky is the limit.
So that was, I was just sorry to interrupt. I was just talking to Counselor Hall. She's going to call in on her phone. But she was going to bring up a. Well, I'll wait for her to bring up her. And I I guess if it doesn't work out and she can't get in, it's, you know, it doesn't. Prohibit her from bringing it up next meeting as well, like I guess we're just trying to, I think administration would like to see everything on the table today, but. But if there's small items, you know. Mr. Given, you're okay with that?
Deputy Mayor Wilson, certainly if there are any small items that can't be addressed today. You know, they're not, they're not going to be so substantive that they would have a material impact. I see Counselor Hall is back. It would be administration's preference that we get all the changes, you know, proposed today, and then council will be able to see the results. Next week and and ideally we'd be in a position where that would have a better potential of being a budget that council would be ready to support. So. I'll I'll pull back and let council have any discussion that they may wish to have.
It will, just now we got her back to Counselor Hall.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Wilson. I'm so sorry, you guys. The internet in the trailer court is not amazing, but. I wanted to bring back a motion for your consideration of version of a motion I tried to move earlier. I would like to make that committee. Direct administration to reflect in the capital budget, a contribution of $4,800, which is half of what the volleyball association is asking. With a requirement that they also contribute the same amount. I'm not sure if it be worded differently. I'll leave that up to you guys, but I think you get the gist of it.
Okay, thank you, Counsel Demota.
Yeah, I think matching contribution donation grant, however you want to call it, I I think it would be good because that does provide some incentive for. Users to, you know, not solely base their ask on taxpayers' dollars and and I think that. You know, with more of an attraction there, it'll attract more people and it'll become, you know, a more used. Facility area. So I like, I like, again, I like the fact that it's getting used more and same with the basketball courts and and other. Areas I've seen, COVID has brought a lot of attention to places that weren't. You know, readily used as much as they were before, and you know, there are, there is, there seems to be a lot more youth involvement now and and. From when I first moved to Jasper thirty something, thirty years ago, that's always been, you know, a big question. It's like. There isn't enough space for for youth to utilize, so I really want to to promote that, and I think that's a good one. So I. Commend Counselor Hall for bringing that forward.
Other counselors? Okay, well, I'll call the question. You know, it looks like we got. Counselor McGrath, or sorry, Kellerman P. Is, geez, is is back with us. Counselor Kellerman P., did you hear Counselor Hall's motion?
No.
All right, Counsel Hall, please just repeat it one more last time and then I'll call the question.
Okay, thank you Deputy Mayor Wilson. I wanted to bring back a motion that I had brought on earlier that wasn't passed, and I would like to move. That committee direct administration to amend the capage, but capital budget to reflect. A contribution on our part of $4,800, which is half of what the volleyball association is asking. With the requirement that they also raise the same amount of funds.
Thank you for that, Counsel Hall. So for the question, I'll call the question, all in favor? Mayor, before the question is called.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Wilson, and I. I'm not necessarily opposed to the motion, but. Is it clear that? There is an association rather than a group of users. And where does this put other user groups with respect to municipal facilities? I was. In favor of the motion as it was earlier presented, acknowledging that it was defeated. And I would still be in favor of funding the volleyball courts. But does this potentially set a precedent? I mean, we wouldn't. I'm sure we won't ask minor sports to contribute half the funding to dressing rooms if we get them changed. I just don't know whether this signals a change in approach by council. So while I favor. The particular line item and understand the the desire to have it advanced. I am. Most curious about whether this positions us in respect to future decisions, and I I'd like to hear from administration. With respect to whether or not they would read anything into this particular motion that would impact. Our approach to similar matters moving forward.
For that, Mr. Given, please.
Sure, Deputy Mayor Wilson, well, certainly council will decide whether this is a change in in council approach and priorities. Would just say that based on the motion that's on the floor, administration would interpret that, that we should have this money available. Should the community come forward with an additional amount of money? That it would take to undertake the project. So basically this tells administration. Do not go and do this full project or this project using exclusively municipal funds. But the municipality is willing to be a partner should the community raise the required balance of funds in order to complete the project. So. From an administration perspective, we would hold the funds until the community group did or didn't come forward. At this time next year, if the community group did not come forward, we would be able to report that to council, and we council would have a choice of either keeping it as a carry forward. To give the community group more time to raise the funds or to cancel that carry forward project and say, okay, well, then I guess it's it's not going anywhere. I would would. And again, it's up to council to decide whether this is the right way to think about it or not. I guess I would characterize it as somewhat similar to the skate park project. Where the municipality has defined its. The level of municipal contribution that council was willing to support of $300,000. And the expectation being that the community group would raise the balance through other sources. Another example in this budget might be the bike park. Program that unfunded item was there. And and the idea being that really the bike. Group, the cycle club, has a responsibility to raise the majority of funds, but the municipality of Jasper was ready to be a, you know, or at least would consider being a. A partner in some smaller portion to a defined level. So I think from an administrative perspective, this would see. We would see this as council defining the level of municipal funding support that it wished to provide. Administration would hold those funds until such time as the community group came forward with the balance of required funding in order to do the project. I think it's up to council to decide if that's a change in approach or if that's actually consistent with some past projects. Or, yeah, or whether it's setting precedent. I sort of want to pine on that.
Okay, thank you for that, Counsel Hall.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Wilson. I wonder, is there any kind of like adult recreational sport policy or something where we? Or could we create one? I really do like the idea and the fact that more adults are participating in sports that are accessible, and I feel there's a need for more accessible. Recreation in our, in our community. Is is there any kind of policy like that?
Counsel Demota, you responded to Counsel Hall.
I don't, I don't have a response to that, but I do believe that there is a user group and or. Some type of organized volleyball association, and. I think that's how it was approached at council, and and I do agree with what counselor or with what. The mayor is saying, and that was my initial apprehension, but I think if the if the group is organized and. They see that, you know, there there is the possibility of doing that, just like anybody else. I wouldn't want, just because that there was a presentation made to council and. It automatically becomes considered as a budgetary line, and now that the space is already there and it's already being used. By the user group, and there is somewhat of an organization attached to it, and they're presenting a proposal for it. If they, I I'm I'm thinking that this, you you get more ownership. When people contribute, you know, a little effort towards it, and and that's kind of, you know, how I wanted to support Counselor Hall's initiative here, and I. I think it's a good one, and I think just like. And I, I think it's a good one. Um, and I think just like, you know, the, the skate, the skate park was, you know, forced to, to go to. You know, the broader community and, and. And other areas that I think, um, you, you do like, I, I hate to repeat myself, but I, I, I feel that there's, there's more of a sense of pride there. And not a place where people just drop in and drop their two dollars.
I didn't, um, think of it too much be for the question or until the, um, Mary Island brought it up, but. It is really fun to matching, um, to user group. So who's to say that, uh, and it's, it would be fair that. If the Jasper Cycling, so Park Cycle Association came up with fifty thousand dollars, well. Why wouldn't the municipality match? Th- theirs, right? It's, uh, tough one because, uh, it, it would, it is precedent setting, I guess. Uh, in regards to Mary Ellen's comment that we're not going to go out and ask, uh, minor sports to. Contribute, um, yet on the other side, uh, with the cycling association, uh. They are, they, they may be able to come up with forty thousand dollars and, uh, are we, would we be? You know, asked to match that. I'm not sure, but, uh, Counselor Demoto.
Yeah, and I appreciate the argument because this is kind of like helps us make decisions, set policy and, and create standards, right? So. You know, when we look at the, the cycling association, didn't we, um, wasn't there some contribution like land or, or, uh. Waivers that we were willing to, to help out with so that they would be successful. I think that we made some arrangements that we were meeting them, uh, in certain areas. So it would be, uh, a sustainable venture for them and, and I think. Um, you know, as far as what, um, you know, taxpayers contribute to, uh, arena facilities and, uh, other areas of the community that. Minor sports uses that, um, there is quite a bit of, uh, money from taxpayers' dollars going towards that. So. There are good arguments on, on either side and I see where this one lies because it's, it's something that's expanding. On exist, existing infrastructure. So, um, you know, I, I think there could be arguments either way and, and maybe without a policy. We shouldn't be, uh, making these types of decisions right now until there is something set up and then we can, uh. Have groups approach us or address, uh, other concerns. So good points.
Counselor Milne.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson and Mayor Ireland. Thank you for your comments and. Um, upon reflection, um, if, if this project is not funded and if it, this. Is this particular motion does not go through, the project still stays on our capital. For the opportunity to review it once we have more clarity with the activity center. And I believe Mr. Given was. Pretty clear that at this point there is, uh, no intention of using that area. But, um, I still think we could be prudent and make this decision to fund this. Um, once we get maybe a bit of a. A bit of a feel from the volleyball association that they're willing to do this. Um, I'm certainly not opposed in principle to providing additional recreational facilities, but I would feel very bad. If we ask someone to fundraise and then nine months later we said, oh, by the way. That space that we said you were going to have, we now require for municipal purposes. So I think, um. We have an opportunity to leave this in our capital, leave it unfunded. And for those reasons, until we get a little more clarity with the, um, the earlier motion that we had regarding our. Um, the request for proposal for our consultants, I, I think I will continue to be opposed to this, um. Motion at this point.
Uh, Counselor Hall.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson. A couple of things. I want to answer your question, uh, Deputy Mayor earlier, what kind of precedent we're setting. And I think. With the skate park, I'm really proud to be part of a town that wants to support these, these recreational ventures and I would. I think it could be looked at as a case by case basis. At second, I am actually now hearing all of your, uh, your points. I'm happy to withdraw the motion because I do actually. Agree with, with everyone and thank you for letting me talk that out.
Thank, thank you, Counselor Hall. That's, uh, the beauty of, uh, debate, I guess. Uh, so are you withdrawing the motion?
I would like to, yes.
At this point, yeah, I think further conversations probably needs to be had. It, it, we, we kind of see it, uh. Through conversation right now. Thank you for that, Counselor Hall. Uh, Counselor Demoto.
Well, I remember being in a session with Mr. Cuff and I wrote down a quote somewhere that if we're spending too much time on a small. Uh, item or a subject, uh, there probably isn't a policy. So, um, you know, reflecting that, I, I think that we could do some work, uh, there down the road. But having said that, uh, if, uh, through you, sir, to Mr. Given. Like, there's nothing keeping us from down the road, uh, accessing reserve money, uh, if we can find it. If, if the, if a group comes forward, say, hey, you know, like, let's, let's explore this and, you know, if, if, if we can put. Some money together for this, are you willing to meet us halfway? I think that opportunity is there.
Uh, Deputy Mayor Wilson for Counselor Demoto, yes, absolutely. I mean, if, uh, the community group came forward. Uh, identified their project and council wished to fund it, uh, council could direct administration to identify appropriate existing funds. Uh, and, and we could give council advice on, you know, what is or isn't available at that time. I mean, the worst and, and again, recognizing it's relatively small amount, it obviously, uh, would have a high potential that we could find some funds to be able to fund that sort of mid-cycle. And it really is just about whether council wishes to have that as a part of a mid-cycle decision and, and start to engage in mid-cycle decision making. Uh, whether they'd like to do it here. Um, and I can appreciate that, that may be a case by case basis, but from an administrative perspective, there is no reason. That council couldn't identify this somewhere through the course of the year if the community group came forward with additional funds and, uh, an additional ask.
Okay, great. Thank you. I think we'll leave it there. So it makes sense for everyone. Um, are there any further, um, items? Um, to be discussed prior to putting Mary Ellen's motion back on the table. See none, um, Mirror Ireland, can I hand it back to you?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson. So I will make a motion then that. Committee recommend that council approve the twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-six capital budget. As amended.
Administration, are you happy with the wording? Any further comments, questions for, call the question? I'll call the question all in favor. Uh, they're not opposed, motion carries. Thank you, everyone. So that, uh, wraps up new business. Uh, we're moving on to, uh, item eight correspondence. Um, we have. Eight point one, a letter from superintendent, uh, regarding the Jasper National Park Draft Management Plan, uh, feedback. Would anybody like to talk to that, Mr. Given?
Uh, I'll just give a brief introduction. You can see that, uh, this is a formal response to council's former input. Uh, and so I think that really acknowledges the receipt to the input the council provided for the draft management plan. They, uh, did see, um, they do identify that they appreciated the opportunity to collaborate. With municipality on parking variances for new staff accommodation developments, on the removal of wildlife attractants and on improving transportation within the town site. And so, um, they identified that they would revise the draft management plan accordingly to in, reflect a higher level of. Collaboration between the muni and parks in those areas. Uh, they also noted, uh, the municipality's requests around. Transitioning land use planning and development authority to the municipality, engaging with council to review the town site limits to growth. And the, uh, commercial cap and eliminating the payment of land rent. Uh, and they noted that those are really out of the scope of the park management plan and referred us, uh, sorry, at the local level. And they referred us to say that if municipal council wished to address those, that, uh, it really would be at a higher order within the Parks Canada agency. So. Um, I think that this, uh, from an administrative perspective, um, council formalized their input, provided it in a formal way. The superintendent is acknowledging that input, uh, letting us know what happened with it. And, uh, for those areas where they didn't feel that they could include it in their local plan, giving us no luck for that. And I think from that administrative perspective, really sort of closes the loop. The next, uh, thing would be to review the draft management plan when it's published. Um, but I think in terms of, uh. Council have provided input, uh, and we have a response back from the agency.
Thank you for that. Um, has there been any, uh, progress on, um, ranging to meeting with Ron Holman? Maybe in the new year, um, but they're directing us to a certain individual that may be able to address the items that they. Um, are unable to at a local level. So I think we should at least put that on our radar and, and, uh, reach out for a meeting in the new year.
Uh, thanks, uh, Deputy Mayor Wilson. So, you know, and, uh, uh, Mayor Ireland and I have been participating with the. Municipality of Banff are, are partners in the other national park, the secondary national park. Uh, to say, you know, to do some advocacy at the federal level. Uh, Mr. Hallman was, uh, is, was and is on our list of people to talk to. But the mayor and the mayor of Banff, uh, Mayor Ireland, the mayor of Banff, Mayor Demoto. Uh, Daman, oh, excuse me, uh, have both had some engagement with, uh, federal ministers recently. Um, and I know that Parks Canada is still on that list, uh, that our consultants are working on organizing meetings for us.
Great, thanks for that. If, uh, Mayor Ireland.
Thank you for that, Deputy Mayor Wilson, and just to, to fill in, um, a little bit more from Mr. Given's. Contact or comments, um, I was contacted by, uh, superintendent fair this morning and. It is possible that a meeting will be arranged with Mr. Hallman. Mid next month, so mid-December, so before, before the new year. Um, that's still in process, so, so we will see. I, I did want to just comment briefly about the, the letter that we received that's on the agenda. And I absolutely appreciate the constraints under which our local field unit superintendent has to operate. Um, and so although the, the wording with respect to our requests about transitioning land use planning and development. Um, limits to growth and elimination of land rent are certainly beyond, um, his authority. It does concern me that if these. Requests are outside the scope of the park management plan and therefore the park management plan is silent. It may add a level of difficulty getting those changes incorporated into a subservient document like the. Town of Jasper Community Sustainability Plan, because plans follow a hierarchy and it is potentially open now for. Parks at a lower level say, we cannot adjust the community sustainability plan because there is no. Enabling wording in the higher dark and document the park management plan. And so. It is important for us to proceed, I think, knowing of those limitations. And one of the reasons we wanted. At least a reference to these issues in the park management plan was to make it permissible for officials at the local level. To engage in those discussions in a lower level planning document. So I, I am, I am not as. Surprised. By this, um, at all, but I am still concerned and it's something I think that we have to keep in mind. Every document in the park's regime follows one above it and, um, unless there is some reference somewhere. To the ability to discuss these issues with our counterparts, I, I fear that those discussions will always be forestalled.
So should we respond to this letter in writing with those sentiments? Because we can say it, we can talk about it, but to have a response back from this, it's suggesting that. This is going to be difficult to collaborating on, on, uh. On other plans. At least. Suggest or let them know our position.
Thank you for that. I, I have two suggestions. One, um, it might be best. To hold those discussions internally. After I've had an opportunity to meet with Mr. Hallman and secondly. I think it is a valid opportunity for council to go into an in-camera session or closed session because these are. Matters of both land and law, which are. Better and permissively discussed in different setting than an open meeting. So I would make both of those suggestions for the time being.
Thank you for that. And you're not suggesting an in-camera meeting, uh, at the end of this meeting, no. So a future in-camera meeting to discuss further. Thank you. Anything further, counselors on, uh, item eight point one? And move on into eight point two, uh, a letter from, uh, resident. Just have to get to that. Um, Keaton Schaefer, age fourteen, from Jasper and, uh, letter requesting, um. Transition at, uh, some courts. Um, in the activity center to, uh, be able to be used for basketball as well. Would anybody like to speak to this letter? I think, uh, Counselor Demoto.
Well, you know, it's an interesting request and then we're kind of caught in that dilemma again from user groups. You know, I, I would like to see something on a trial basis, maybe only because, uh, the racket, the, those courts, uh, downstairs at the activity center. Um, are rarely used for their specific purpose, rarely. And because of insurance and, and, uh, some damage that occurred, we were able to replace the floors. I'm not sure if they're completed yet. Uh, but there was, okay, so they are completed down there. I haven't seen them since then. Um, so we do have some new flooring in there and if, if it's a similar. Type of flooring or it's conducive to be able to go shoot hoops or the space is there, then, you know, like, I'm open to, uh, exploring other uses. For, you know, even if they're temporary.
Well, I think the sport of racquetball is dead, but squash is alive and well. So maybe there's one that could be used.
Yeah, it depends on who you talk to.
I, I saw, uh, Mr. Given for response and, uh, Counselor Hall after that.
Thanks, Deputy Mayor Wilson. I was just going to give, uh, you know, a, a process suggestion. If, uh, this is the first time the council's seen this in a public forum. Uh, council may wish to refer the matter to administration, uh, for follow-up as appropriate. Uh, that way, you know, there'd be a formal acknowledgement that council has heard this request and has formally asked administration to look at what might be possible. I wouldn't expect that we would have, uh, a, a report and an RFD and, you know, well, if council wants to. If council wishes administration to have a look at this and see what we can do, then you could tell us so by make motion to refer to administration. And we'll take a look, see what we can do. And if it's something that we can act on relatively easily, then we would just do so. Uh, without really needing any additional council, uh, direction on that. Um, if council is in interest in the idea at all, then, uh, then you can just move to receive this letter for information. Um, and you can, uh, keep it in your minds for, you know, potential future, future actions or future discussion, um, but taking no action today.
Thank you for that. And before going to Counselor Hall, I, I just want to jump back. I apologize. Um, I would, I would be looking for a motion to receive, um, the letter under eight point one, Parks Canada for information. Just want to strike that one off my list, um, would have a motion, Counselor Demoto. Uh, with, with that motion all in favor? Okay, all in favor, um, no opposed, sorry about that. Uh, Counselor Hall, uh, back to item eight point two in the letter.
Thank you. Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson. I think this letter speaks to the need for more accessible. In, indoor activities, especially in the wintertime for our youth. I would, would, I would, I, and what Mr. Given was saying, I would love more information. How mu- how often are the squash courts used? Is it even possible? I know that when I worked at the daycare, we'd often take the kids down there when it was really cold outside. So maybe the. Basketball net that gets put up could be lowered and it could double as some extra space for the wellflowers kids. I do, I would like to see administration come back to us with some options.
Thank you for that, Counselor Milne.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Wilson, and through you to Mr. Given. Uh, Mr. Given, you shared with us a document. Regarding the scope of the, uh, Activity Center Capital Project renovation scope, and I do see in there. In the basement, the rooms of the basement, this, this is a, a bit of a dated document, I believe, prior to your time. It did have in there that looking at the fitness space, storage, storage space for visiting use, including additional meeting space, a variety of purposes. Is this still part of the scope of of what we are just talking about? Or what we voted on earlier this this morning?
Counselor Melnick through Deputy Mayor Wilson. Yes, at this stage, you know, that is the high level scope from the original grant submission. That would be our starting point. And in discussion with the designers, I can, you know, really saying, okay, does this scope fit within the money that we have? Can we squeeze more stuff in? Do we have to squeeze some stuff out? So really, that would be our starting point for the discussion, along with all the other facility assessment information that we've been collecting over the last couple of months.
Thank you. And I do appreciate Counselor Hall's comments about the use that I was not aware of with the with the daycare also. The fact that you know, there can be other purposes for that particular space. So it would be prudent for us to, I think, get to the next stage prior to making any changes and acknowledge that this resident has provided this commentary to us and to keep it in consideration as we look at the total renovation.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Wilson. I prepared to make a motion that council received the letter as information and refer the letter to administration for consideration and report back to council as appropriate. I will say in making the motion that it would be an opportune time as well, I think, for administration to share with particularly new council. The report that we commissioned in the last term for the culture and recreation facilities review, and we did some extensive consultation throughout the community regarding use of our spaces and what opportunities residents saw as necessary to move forward with. And so this letter can be part of that overall community consultation, but I think should not supplant the good work that we've already done in that regard. So if we're looking at at one letter to spur change, that's that's one thing, but we see it in context of that study that sat before us actually for for a few years because it got delayed because of COVID. But there is a very large study about potential changes to our offerings, and this should fit within that, it seems to me. But in any event, my motion is that we receive the letter as information and refer it to administration for consideration as necessary.
I think for that motion, would anybody like to speak further to the motion? Pretty straightforward. I'll call the question all in favor. There are none opposed, motion carries. Okay, so we're moving on to item nine, motion action list. We'll hand this back over to Mr. Given to run us through. Briefly.
Deputy Mayor Wilson, briefly, I think I'll take that direction. So there are a number of items out and, you know, for new council, this is the intent of the motion action list to ensure that administration is tracking the items that council has asked us to do and reporting back on when we intend to deliver those items. And it facilitates good conversations as we're about to have. The top three items that are listed there, the bike skills park, the principles for utility rates bylaw and the paid parking pilot project wrap-up report for all items that were forecast to come for November. Between budget and election and AUMA administration has had to put those off. With respect to the paid parking wrap-up report and recommendations, administration expects to bring that forward at the same committee, the whole meeting that will bring for the operating budget. It does obviously have an operating implication. And so we will bring that report before council considers the operating budget. So that would be December. I believe specifically the December fourteenth committee, the whole meeting is when you can expect to see that one. The principles for the utility rates bylaw, we can put for December as well. I know that Ms. Meloncheck has been working on that one. And we may be in a position to be able to bring that that same meeting again, recognizing that does have an impact on the operating budget for the year. And the bike skills park, we have a draft of that report. It was submitted. And we just pulled it just with respect of time for today. So we can also bring that one. And I honestly, I would hesitate to bring that one in December. If we're already doing principles for utility rate bylaw, paid parking pilot project and and the operating budget at our next committee meeting, my recommendation would be that we bring the bike skills park report to council in January. The report is done. The cycling association has seen it. And we have a draft operating agreement to present, but I, you know, I don't think that that month of difference at this stage is going to make a significant difference in their ability to move forward in twenty twenty-two if council decides to want to do that. The other changes that you'll see. The mountain makers and culture item. We're referring, recommending that it be referred to January and all the other items, I believe, are still on track. The visual identity and logo redesign has December date. So that would come December fourteenth with the recommendation on councils. Role in that in that process. But other than that, all the other items are on track. And again, you know, the intent of this is for councils to know that their items have not been lost. And to understand why administration, you know, why they haven't shown up. And so my commitment to council is that if we can't bring something, we'll tell you why we can't bring it. And if council decided, hey, that's really important, we need to do it. You can give us direction about, you know, what should come first. Or if if necessary, you know, I would, I would give council the advice that if it was down to capacity and resources, then we would say so. But it gives council better understanding of the administrative flow of the organization. With that, Deputy Mayor Wilson, I'd suggest that council committee make a motion to amend the motion action list as recommended.
Would I have a counselor willing to make that motion? Anything further regarding the motion action list? I'll call the question all in favor. There are none opposed. Thank you. All right, we're moving on to item ten, council representation on various boards and upcoming meetings. I missed out on the opportunity, new business to bring up something and it, you know, last, well, two weeks ago, we were at AUMA for the first time in person in a year or two, and it was really great to be back. You know, collaborating with other council members across the province. But one of the highlights was seeing Mayor Ireland being recognized for his distinguished service award. So I know that the municipality has posted that on their social media feed, but I'd also want to just bring that up here that Mayor Ireland received recognition for his distinguished extended service for twenty years in service. And we all know that is quite a bit longer. But Alberta municipalities had recognized him along with other other individuals that have weathered the storm in municipal politics for so long. So it was very exciting to see. Other than that, counselors reports on boards. Committees. AUMA. Counselor Demona.
Well, I like the fact that you brought that up because I did want to share some of my notes and in the experiences that we had there, but considering the long day, I might use that when we have a shorter agenda, maybe the next one. Because there were some some really good things that we that we were exposed to and and learned. And, you know, I tried to take advantage of many of those sessions and and I I don't ever like missing the the first one because I know it's detrimental to team bonding throughout the term. And you know, I was really grateful to be able to to hang out with all the council and then share similar ideas and then share also new information that was coming at us. And and I like the way things are going and particularly with with AUMA or a, what is it now?
Alberta municipalities.
Alberta municipalities, AM. Okay, so anyway, a good approach. And I think we have some good advocacy there. And I look forward to sharing more down the road. Thank you.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Wilson. Thank you for your for your kind words. More appreciation than that I would have expected. And it was mentioned again at at Netma last week for those who were there. So I thank staff for that. In terms of upcoming meetings, I have a suggestion that that could, with the consent of council, become a direction, a one-time direction. Just considering the time we have put in today with staff, valuable time looking at the capital budget. I think the operating budget is going to be a more fulsome discussion even than the capital budget was. That's coming up in two weeks and Mr. Given has just indicated that there are at least two other reports that will impact the operational budget, that is the paid parking pilot project report and principles for utility rates. Both of those are heavy topics and will require some time. So my suggestion for council at this time is to direct administration that in terms of agenda setting for December fourteenth. Nothing else should be on that agenda. We have to limit that agenda to have, I think, the really necessary discussions that the budget requires. And already, I think we're looking at a very long day. And so I would propose that as a matter of direction, we now direct administration that you know, unless the world is burning, nothing else gets on that agenda for December fourteenth.
Oh yeah, I think we saw head nods around the table. Not sure we need a motion for that and direction is there. Everybody happy with that? Okay, thank you for that, Mayor Ireland. Counselors, any any other? Any other items to add under item ten point one? Right.
Thank you Deputy Mayor Wilson. Just very briefly. Last Friday did have the opportunity to attend the TransCanada Yellowhead Highway Association meeting. Not a lot of items to report back. Twenty twenty-two be the seventy-fifth anniversary of the association. And we had a bit of a discussion about increasing membership. Now that we appear to be coming out of COVID, lots of work was done at AUMA for trying to get additional members back with the association. And the only other item I would like to bring up is for the next. Since we're not going to be talking about council appointments to boards, the next meetings. The next museum board meeting will be Tuesday, December fourteenth, which I plan to attend.
Thank you for that. Okay. Thank you, counselors. We're moving on to item eleven, upcoming events. So we have ahead of us. Usually it's a little bit longer of a list at the start of December on upcoming events, but we have World Tree Lighting Friday, December tenth. At from six PM to eight PM. Netna, the next Netma is December fifteenth from four to seven at the Robson House for an I'm Patricia Street. Community-wide ugly sweater day is Friday, December seventeenth. We know you have those Counselor Demota. And then holiday break, we don't have meetings on either the Tuesday, December twenty-first or December twenty-eight. And that brings us to our last agenda item is adjournment. Oh, Mayor Ireland, go ahead.
I am remiss. I believe that I had had a request from staff to mention other things that might be added to upcoming events, and I didn't do that. But just for information for council. Friday this week, December second, is the Jasper Park Chamber of Commerce Christmas Party. As of last Wednesday at Netma, we were told that sales were brisk and there were about twenty-five tickets available. So if any counselors are interested in attending that function, don't delay. It may already be sold out. I'm not sure. Friday, December second, and similarly on December tenth. Sadly, in conflict with the World Tree Lighting is the Jasper volunteer fire brigade Christmas party. And again, I'm anticipating that counselors may have received invitations to that. Just so you're aware that there are, in fact, some things happening because of Christmas in the community.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay, so item twelve, adjournment, do I have a motion to adjourn the meeting? Take that from Counselor Keller empty and I'll ask a question at two fifty-three. All in favor? There are none opposed. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone, for your participation.
Great job, everybody. Awesome meeting.
Thank you.